Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for joining us.
I just hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving. I'm Greg King. This is the November 2023 meeting of Oldham County Planning and Zoning. And if you will, please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge is to glorify the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And on cue, everybody, please join me in silencing those phones, please. First order of business will be approval of last month's minutes. Can I get a motion on the floor, please?
Slow move.
Mr. Elder, thank you. Any edits, changes to the minutes? Ms. Jones?
I just have one small thing. On page five, the third bullet point, it just reads a little difficult. It says, "Design innovations of this site will achieve by." So I don't know if it should be, "Will it be achieved by?" Or remove the "by," "will achieve the basic objective."
I think adding "be achieved," just adding the word "be" will make that a reasonable sentence.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right, anyone else? Fair enough. We will go with a voice vote on approval of minutes. All of those in favor of approving the minutes as edited, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Minutes are approved. Mr. Fogel, you have our first item? Oh, Ms. Edgar, can you read the first docket item, please?
Docket PZ 23024. Application has been filed by Gant Jones for the approval of a zoning map amendment and master plan on approximately 500 acres to be known as Chlor Station. The properties are located at 7001, 7140, 7204, 7202, 7206, 7180, 7315, 7319, and 7345, Highway 329, and 6530, Dovefield Drive, Crestwood. The current zoning districts are R2 and R2A residential districts, C4, Highway Service District, and CO1 Conservation Residential District. And the proposed zoning is PND, Planned Neighborhood Development District.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. Mr. Fogel, before we get underway, can we go ahead and get all staff sworn in, please?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Fogel, you're up.
Good morning. Brian Fogel, Assistant Director, Oldham County Planning and Development Services. The application before you guys today is a zone change and approval of a master plan and a master plan code for a 500-acre development in the proximity of Highway 329 and Interstate 71 in Crestwood. Notifications for today's public hearing, we posted it on the county's website on the 30th of September. We mailed a joining property owners, and a public notice appeared in the Oldham County Magazine on the 2nd of November. And then, five zoning change signs were placed at different points on the property on November The areas highlighted in red on the screen here are the project. So it's basically the three quadrants of the exit 14 on Interstate 71, and then along O329 and 329 bypass. This is the first time the Planning Commission has heard a zone change for a Planned Neighborhood Development District. So we're just going to spend a moment to kind of go through what a Planned Neighborhood Development District is. And what it is, is that it's an area that's defined as a specific minimum contiguous acreage to be developed by a single entity according to a plan with mixed uses of both residential and non-residential uses. And the thing that's unique about this is that the application includes its own zoning code, which is not the typical traditional zoning that you guys are used to seeing. It's a type of zoning called Form Base Code, which focuses on a mixture of the uses and then also the relationship between the different properties. It includes specific standards for design of streets and open spaces. And the code is presented both in words and graphics and drawings, which the applicant, I'm confident, is probably going to explain to you guys in greater detail. All right, so the approval process for Planned Neighborhood District, it's a four-step process. So the first step was that there had been ongoing meetings between the applicant and staff to go over the concept plan, and then lay out the timeline and the process for where we get it before you guys today. And that's the second step. The master plan and the zoning map amendment has to be reviewed and decided by you all, which is what we're here for today. But when you all make a decision, it has an additional step that it has to go to. It has to go to the legislative body, which in this case will be the Crestwood City Commission. And then, assuming that everything is approved, and we get to that point, when development is to start in this, it then goes through what we would think of as a subdivision plan process or a phase plan process. And what that would require is that then, as each phase of the development would come in, it would go to the Technical Review Committee for review and comment with public notice and public hearings. And then the final step, assuming that it gets through the Technical Review Committee step, all right, the final step would be then just basically a staff review by the county engineer's office and the commission staff, which is really analogous to what we do with residential subdivisions. So in terms of the application for Planned Neighborhood Development, there are 12 items that have to be submitted as part of the application. And I'm going to run through these quickly just to explain to you all that all 12 items have been submitted as part of this application in conformance with the zoning ordinance. And number eight is significant. And again, the applicants will be able to explain this further. In terms of that Form Base Code, there's actually a tool called Smart Code Version And then capacity analysis, which we will get into also further in the presentation. And then compliance with the regulations. So the thing that's different about the Planned Neighborhood Development District versus traditional zoning is, as part of the application, the applicants have written their own development code. So the way the ordinance is set up is that the applicant writes their own development code, where they specifically substitute that in place of the county regulations. However, if, oops, if there are instances where they have not written something in their code that is addressed by the county regulations, the county regulations will then be in effect. And in terms of what they've proposed, there are specific references in one of their districts, which is the Healthcare Special District, where they do reference the zoning ordinance, which is a little bit different for that particular district. So, you know, with those 12 items, the 12 items have been addressed adequately and are in conformance with the zoning ordinance requirements for a Planned Neighborhood Development District proposal. So in terms of the review history, the timeline, so our last pre-application conference with the applicant was held on July 26th, which is one of the necessary steps to go through the process. On August 22nd, the applicant had a neighborhood meeting at Crestwood Baptist Church to explain the project to the general public and anyone that was in attendance. On September 20th, the application appeared before the Technical Review Committee for review and comment. And then, we're here today where it's before the Planning Commission. The additional step that will be required after you all make a decision is that it'll have to go to the Crestwood City Commission for their decision. So in terms of conformance with the procedures requirement for the Planned Neighborhood Development District, it is in conformance with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So I think we've covered that, both with Ms. Edgar reading the agenda, that what they're requesting is a change in zoning from residential, conservation residential, and how it, commercial Highway Services District, to Planned Neighborhood Development District. So this is an image of the existing zoning map with the properties highlighted in red. Primarily, what is yellow would be either R2 or R2A residential. What's highlighted in green would be the Conservation Residential Zoning District. And then what's highlighted in red would be the C4 commercial. So the proposal is to change the zoning on those particular properties to Planned Neighborhood Development. Now, in order for you guys to review and approve a request for Planned Neighborhood Development, besides making sure that the submittal complies with the requirements of the zoning ordinance, you have to find that the proposal is in agreement with the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan. So we're going to cover a couple things in the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan where there are specific references to the exit 14 area in Crestwood. The Oldham County Comprehensive Plan's future land use maps designates the majority of the site as being mixed use, and then a smaller portion of it is attached multifamily. So the mixed use, future land use, is basically an area that's combining several different intensity uses to encourage the integration of modes of travel while not overburdening the infrastructure. And the attached multifamily is a residential use that includes duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, apartment buildings, and condominiums. And the future land use map is right here. And this is taken from the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan. All right, the business and industry element of the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan addresses exit 14 and the future development along exit 14. And it specifically says that it's probably reasonable to expect there's going to be a lot of development along exit 14, given the fact that it's the next exit coming from eastern Jefferson County in the Gene Snyder Freeway, and that the chloro farm development will occupy the majority of the properties near exit 14. With the three corners or quadrants of that interchange would be a major asset to the county and the city of Crestwood as it develops over the next 20 to 25 years. And it recognizes that the chloro family has hired an internationally recognized design firm to work on their proposal, and that it's anticipated the first phase of construction, if it's approved, would begin in 2025 or 2026. In terms of the infrastructure, which is also addressed in the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan, and it specifically references this development, where it's saying that the planned chloro development with the families and development team, they're working with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet on improvements in the area that would help accommodate any future growth that would be generated from this particular development. Now, when you submit a Planned Neighborhood Development Plan, there are elements you have to satisfy. And I'm going to hold these up just real quick, and then we're going to go through them. And when I say go through them, it's just to introduce it to you guys. It's, the applicants will go through this specifically to explain what their project is. But this is the master plan, the development code, which we'll be making references to. And then, with the Healthcare Special District, there's an addendum to the development code where it specifically provides some standards for the Healthcare Special District. So, the master plan has to have an existing conditions map, which the applicants have provided. And then they also have to show what their plans are, including land uses and indicating transects and the locations, acreages of each transect. Transect's a new term for you guys. We're going to let the applicant explain that to you. Their circulation or transportation plan, an open space plan, a community facility plan, and a stormwater management plan. All those things are incorporated in this document right here. Here's a cover of that particular document, and then the table of contents to give you guys a sense of how comprehensive it is, and everything that is included in that particular document. And then about three or four just images from the document. So this is an aerial of the existing conditions of the property at exit 14. This northeast parcel has been designated as a Healthcare Special District that will be explained. And then you've got the southeast parcel, the middle parcel, and the southwest parcel. And this is their annotated master plan, showing that over the next 30 years, this is the anticipation of how this particular area would develop under the Planned Neighborhood Development District. And here is a phase plan, showing that right now, their anticipation in terms of the phases and how it would develop over the next 25 to 30 years would occur in these particular phases. So to reinforce the idea that there's more public comment and input on this, if this gets approved, each of these particular phases has to go through a public notice and a public hearing process with our Technical Review Committee. And here's a table where they show the acreages of the project. They have it broken down by the quadrants here, and then just a summary of the acreages in terms of what's in each of the particular transects, what's in open space, what's in commercial, and then what's residential, and then the anticipated number of dwelling units, which would be right here. Okay, the master code are going to be these two particular documents right here. Make sure I'm holding the right ones up. All right, so in those, there are general provisions, subdivision standards, the Healthcare Special District, which because it is a special district, has some special standards of its own, building and site standards, street standards, and definitions. And then the other thing I was holding up was the Baptist Health Guidelines, which provide some architectural guidelines for the development of the Healthcare Special District, which is located at the northeast quadrant of the interchange. Here's a cover of that. And then the table of contents to give you guys a sense of how comprehensive the development code is. And then an image of the Baptist Health architectural standards, which would apply to the Healthcare Special District. The documents that they have submitted satisfies the requirements for the zoning ordinance for someone to submit a complete application for Planned Neighborhood Development District. So part of what was mentioned when we talked about the Planned Neighborhood Development District is the infrastructure. So certainly, one aspect of the infrastructure would be transportation and the roadways. So the applicants have completed a traffic impact study. We're going to touch on that just a little bit. And in the traffic impact study, it's broken down into an introduction, existing conditions, future conditions, the chip generations, their analysis, conclusions, and then appendices that people like engineers like Jim can look at and interpret, and the rest of us take his word for it. Here's an image of the cover of the traffic study, the table of contents showing how comprehensive it is. And then a conclusions page, which I'm only going to touch upon real briefly, not because it's not important, but it's for other parties to address. The conclusions basically say this development is going to create the need for some turn lanes and some signals at particular intersections, and also that it's kind of a living document almost, that as things develop and things change in Crestwood, there may be need, may be further refinements needed to this particular plan. And I'm also going to touch upon the transportation projects that have occurred or are occurring or anticipated to occur in the Crestwood area because it impacts this particular development and the entire Crestwood area. So with Chlor Station being at exit 14 on 71, which is a state road, Highway 329, and then the Highway 329 bypass, it falls under the jurisdiction of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. So in October 2019, there was a park and ride lot constructed in the Apple Patch neighborhood. A pedestrian sidewalk was completed this September along Spring Hill Trace. Some of us live this twice a day. I-71 is currently being widened from the Gene Snyder Freeway to exit 14. What has started under construction just this fall is improvements to Highway 329 and Highway 329 bypass, with it being realigned to improve safety and then also add a traffic signal. In the design phase, that design phase right now are improvements to exit 14. Also in the design phase is the Interstate 71 widening from four to six lanes from exit 14 to exit 18, which is, I call the second Buckner exit, just because it's the newer one. And then what was just approved this month would be a Highway 329 bypass access management study, where the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, in partnership with other partners, are studying the 329 bypass corridor from exit 14, I-71, the Highway 22, so going under the bypass in Crestwood, for access management improvements with an emphasis on safety, operations, design, travel demand, and multimodal use of the corridor. And it will focus on short-term improvements and long-term improvements that can be used to accommodate future development. That pretty much concludes the planning staff's presentation of this request. So the request is to rezone the 500 acres with an accompanying master plan and a master code for the development of the property. Any decision that you all make is in the form of a recommendation to the Crestwood City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Fogel. Mr. Siliman, anything from you?
Good morning. Jim Siliman, Oldham County Engineer and Stormwater Coordinator. I'm not going to have a visual presentation for you, kind of given the unique nature of this review. However, what I'd like to do is just talk to you, talk through some future review processes from our department's standpoint. The unique nature that I speak of are two criteria for our review as engineering department, our stormwater, as a stormwater coordinator, and traffic, as an engineer. And the scale of this project, the build-out time, shown as 27 to 30 years, the preliminary nature of the master plan itself, and also the PND process itself lends itself to that unique nature. With regard to stormwater, of course, this is much greater than one acre, which is our threshold for a stormwater quality management erosion control permit through the county. So each phase would require that in addition to the KYR-10 permit from the Division of Water at the state level. Water at the state level. Detention basins and any stormwater management will be required to meet the current ordinance, that's not an exception in the PND standards, that will still meet the current ordinance for stormwater management, and we talked about that, detention basins that retain the 210 and 100-year storm. KYTC also frequently includes the 25-year storm event. And also, locations of basins and other features, whether it's pedestrian trails, road crossings, culverts, that might impact storm features, whether it's blue line streams or other, would also require the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer coordination and permitting and Division of Water, and that's probably going to be included in the typical binding element that the development has to be in accordance with all applicable federal, local, and state regulations. With regard to the traffic, Brian touched on a handful of these studies that are currently going on, or construction projects that affect this project. 329B itself, the bypass, is currently an access controlled right-of-way. Brian mentioned the study that was authorized just this month to further evaluate that roadway from 71 all the way to 22, and determine its, I'll say its nature, and how it can be improved and changed, and Brian mentioned the access management improvements. So that's gonna be a key in coordination with this project, considering the numerous additional or proposed intersections shown on this map. That'll all have to go through a KYTC approval process, and the study that the county's working on with KYTC is going to assist in that evaluation. Additionally, I know the applicant, along with Jim Urban and myself, have met with KYTC and their design consultants to evaluate the improvements to 329 north of 71 at the hospital, and what lanes would need to be improved for that. So I know their consultants and their team are looking at the traffic impact study the applicant has, in addition to how it could affect the interchange associated with I-71 and the widening project itself. Brian mentioned the proposed binding element for the turn lanes, that mentions the findings and conclusions of the traffic impact study, and I agree with that, that's very reasonable, the traffic impact study itself and what it noted. And I think one of the most important statements in that is that the last sentence of those findings and conclusions is "all intersections will need further refinement as development plans for each section are prepared for construction." Again, that just lends itself to the understanding that this is a long build-out process, and each phase as it comes to TRC and the county for a review will require further refinement. I will be speaking with the applicant more between now and the approval with the Crestwood, city of Crestwood process, with regard to some detail aspects. One, take for instance, the master plan indicates some street speed limits in 10 mile-per-hour increments. The county typically has five mile-per-hour increments, 15, 25, 35, I think to be consistent with the county in general, that should be in those five mile-per-hour increments. Also wanted to talk to them about effective curve radius, curb radius at intersections. But again, those are details that, as Brian indicated and mentioned, or went through the PND process, they shouldn't affect the planning commission's approval or review of this process, that'll be before that Crestwood review. With regard to, I believe, was the proposed binding element for the Spring Hill subdivision noted, Jim?
There's a whole bunch of them.
Okay. I think it's in the documents. There's a proposed binding element with regard to some concerns from the Spring Hill subdivision, the adjacent HOA, and number seven is with regard to blasting. And I just wanted to note that with regard to blasting, while the, there are no local ordinances or regulations for blasting, it does have to go through all procedures and regulations of the state of Kentucky. So, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Siliman.
Thank you.
Anything additional from staff? Alright. Mr. Williams, you got anything to add today?
Name and address, please. Let's get your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Williams, excuse me, 6165 West Highway 146, Crestwood, Kentucky. As this commission is aware, we went through a long process, I don't know, two years ago at this point, maybe a little before that, I don't remember with all the things that have gone on since then, to look at how this fits with the district, the school district. And the school district looked at adding additional elements to the numbers of units that would be allowed, and that was the switch from when we used to call them permits, now we call them units per year. We added the things that allow for the dedication of open space and commercial property as a multiplier that comes on to the capacity letter that you all receive each time, that they would not exceed, with all those multipliers, it would not exceed 125 units per year. In the numbers that we have laid out and the board approved last Monday, it is granted up to that 125 units per year. So, and I actually have the final form for you guys.
Thank you, sir. Alright, anything additional from staff? Alright, commission. Jim, do you have anything before we get underway here?
Well, it's a whole different zoning classification and the way that we are actually considering including standards. And Brian did a really good job of explaining that, but I want to make sure that you all understand that this document, these TND standards, would substitute for the zoning ordinance. If you look at them, they are much more detailed than our zoning regulations are, but that if anything isn't in here, and I know that the healthcare campus is gonna consider using things like our lighting standards, so if there aren't standards in this TND standards, then we would apply our zoning ordinance requirements. So, I just wanted to make sure that you all understood that first of all. Again, Brian did a great job of explaining what it is. The process also, each phase, if this were to go through city of Crestwood and then be approved, each phase has to go to the technical review committee. And as Brian mentioned, that adjoining property owners are noticed, it's a public hearing in this room, the TRC is made up of the agencies and utilities that provide services in the area, they would comment on very specific issues that are technical in nature, and that's where the refinement of everything, like the intersections that are proposed in the traffic analysis, would be considered by the Transportation Cabinet. So, there are still layers of review, even after it should go through the approval process. There were a lot of road improvements mentioned by Brian, any questions about those? The one in particular that is, I think, important, just yesterday, we got the notice to proceed to study the 329 bypass from I-71 all the way to Kentucky 22. The Kentucky 146 intersection where McDonald's is, is part of that. It's kind of, the bypass was originally developed as a connection between I-71 and the Gene Snyder. As we went through a study many years ago, Waldak Farms was placed in a historic district, the entire property, and we were using federal funds, and that essentially stopped the project from continuing. So now we're looking at what the 329 bypass is. I always call it a substitute for the old road, which was a two-lane road, but it is a limited access, controlled access, higher speed, 55 mile an hour, and we're gonna study it for safety improvements, making sure that all the intersections are gonna function appropriately, even off into the future, there'll be travel demand that's analyzed by the consultants, and then make recommendations that we can then use to make improvements along the balance of that corridor. Michael was up here mentioning about the school capacity, it is something different. We did, we went through the study review committee, the planning commission, and ultimately the legislative bodies, and did change building permits to units, so whether it's a single-family or a multifamily unit, each one is considered a unit, not a building permit. And the maximum capacity, as Michael presented, is 125 units per year. And that's based on non-residential development as a part of the formula. So I don't know if there are any other specific questions, but I want to just highlight a lot of what you heard so far this morning.
Alright, commissioners, now it's your turn, questions of staff. Ms. Nassar.
Okay, my first question on roads, so you might be able to give insight. On the maps, it kind of already addresses, it looks like it already has a proposed change on that bypass, if I'm seeing that correctly, is that, if we haven't done the study yet, is this just a potential what might change, or?
That's correct. Are you talking about?
Did you have a specific location?
Yeah, so, like I'm looking at this one that has 4A on it, you can kind of see where old 329 curves and hits a different angle.
Okay. So, when Oldham County, along with the city of Crestwood and the Transportation Cabinet several years ago, looked at improvements to that old 329 and the 329 bypass intersection, I mean, it's hard to get out of there, it's high speed, people are coming down a hill, visibility is an issue. In that process, we had alternatives that were proposed by the consultants, and the one that is on this plan was not the one that was selected by the Transportation Cabinet, we call that the jug handle. It makes some sense because there, it would eliminate a few of the intersections between the interstate and the old 329. What is being constructed today is actually improvements in place. So we didn't want to pause the project to see what we were gonna do with this quote-unquote jug handle, we had money in that study to go ahead and do construction, and it's under construction today, to improve the intersection, including a traffic signal at its current location. So, this is a concept, and again, the master plan, if you think of it as conceptual in nature, it's got a lot of detail, it looks a lot more refined than a concept, but that would petition the Transportation Cabinet to move that intersection at some point in the future.
Ms. Nassar, anything additional? Who else? Mr. Douglas.
County engineer, please. Jim, I know we're making, we would be making a recommendation to the city of Crestwood, and I believe the city of Crestwood has their own city engineer?
Yes.
And have you been coordinating with the city engineer?
We coordinated, I coordinated with him more early on at the TRC phase, of course, as this goes to the city of Crestwood for the next review, we'll definitely be in touch with him, and then every subsequent phase that comes through, we'll continue to coordinate with William.
If the commissioners, just whatever decision they make, if any binding element, would it be feasible for us to put in there that city of Crestwood should work with the county engineer's office to coordinate, like road designs, or not road designs?
I think you can add that, that's gonna be the process, the process no matter what.
It will be the process?
We will coordinate with the city of Crestwood, but I think you're welcome to add that as a binding element.
Okay. Okay. My final question, my last question will be, is the coordination with the stormwater portion of it? With the city engineer and you, same thing, with the state getting permits, Army Corps of Engineer, I'm assuming the blue line stream is gonna come into effect here, so...
Right. And I think I didn't mention it on my previous comments, but even the floodplain analysis is gonna be part of this, if, because some of the details show work in the, work in or around the floodplain, so that'll be a consideration also.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Douglas?
No, sir.
Anyone else? Mr. Fox?
Clarification, I'm not sure which of the staff, you said that, so we're considering this master plan today, and then you said something about, as the phases came along, there would be a technical review committee on the phases. Does it then come back before this commission, as each phase goes along?
No, it does not. It goes to the technical review committee.
All you have, Mr. Fox? Okay, anyone else? Mr. Ender?
So, another question I had was, are the phases of this outside of the 125 units not annually, are the phases discretionary after this is approved as a master plan, or is it binding?
I think the applicant is gonna show you a potential phasing plan, but if you ask them a question, and I don't mean to answer for them, and they'll probably say it's gonna depend a little bit on the market, so you can ask the applicant at that.
Anything else, Mr. Ender? Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Please, go right ahead.
So, if there was note, the technical review committee would technically look at any changes to the master plan, or just the phases, or, because if there are any changes to the master plan, shouldn't it come back to the commissioners?
Yes, the provisions in the plan, or the planned neighborhood development district portion of the zoning ordinance, and this might answer your question more comprehensively than just saying simply, go, the phases go to the technical review committee, that if there are major changes to the master plan, the planning commission can amend that master plan. So, I guess the answer to your question is if there were a drastic difference in this master plan, something that's less than minor, that change in the master plan would come back to the planning commission. But in terms of the phases, they will just simply go to the technical review committee.
For our recommendation, and then goes back to the legislation, city of Crestwood?
No, the way the planned neighborhood development district is set up is that once the master plan has been approved, it's, would just simply be technical review committee, unless there's a major amendment, which does not have to go to the city of Crestwood.
Think of it this way.
I got it. I just want him to clarify that.
Got it. But for everybody, if this were just a subdivision, a single-family residential subdivision, you would hear it once, if you approved it, the construction plans would go through staff. When we were looking at the magnitude of this development, we didn't want to just lay it at the feet of the staff only, so the PND zoning classification was created specifically with the idea that each phase goes to the TRC, simply because impact on utilities may be different, because this is a long-range plan, it may take them 20 years to do all this, and not just the first phase, but maybe even the last phase, conditions may be different. So, rather than just a staff-level review, we said we'll take each phase to the TRC. And that's in the PND zoning classification.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Douglas? Anyone else? Alright, thank you, gentlemen. We'll now move into presentation from the applicant, and others in support of the application. Do you guys want to go ahead and get anyone who's gonna provide testimony for your application sworn in?
Sure.
All who are going to testify, please stand, raise your right hand.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jay's supposed to transfer it over.
As you each approach the podium, we'll go ahead and grab your name and address for the record, please.
Clay Barkley, 730 West Main Street, Louisville, Kentucky, 40202.
Gant Jones, 2910 Darby Creek Drive, Crestwood, Kentucky.
Thank you.
Try to pull the microphone up, it'd be easier than punching down.
I have this problem all the time. I have this problem all the time. If only it worked in basketball a little better. Good morning. My name is Clay Barkley. I'm an attorney representing the Jones group today in their application to rezone the historic Chlor Farm to PND zoning as outlined in section 236 of the Oldham County zoning ordinance. Present today for the development team are Gant Jones, who will follow me with a presentation that is a little more specific on some of the design aspects of the development, and Bill Ramsey, and Bill Jones, and Clay Jones, and other members of the Chlor and Jones family. Also present today, as you know, in the northeast parcel, will be a Baptist Health Hospital. And present today are Clint Cahoe, the president of Baptist Health La Grange, and Howard This has been a, let me move forward in the presentation. Here we go. So initially, I want you to look at the master plan briefly, because I think I want to clarify a couple of things. If we look at the master plan, I think it's important to note three things. One, that a lot of the parcels in the southern portion are actually lots. So if you look at the private lots and the special district lots, those sort of shaded areas, those aren't buildings. So it looks like it's more dense than it actually is. Now, if you look at the northeast corridor, you will see buildings, the hospital buildings and related buildings. But in general, those are lots and not buildings. The second thing, and we've already talked about this, is that this is not going to be developed immediately. This is developed over many years and decades, and the initial phases will come before the technical review committee, as has been described. The other aspect I think is important is just the amount of green space that's in this development. So if you look at, there are 115 acres that are green space or open space, and that is quite different than other new urbanist developments like Norton Commons, where you have some green space and open space, but not nearly this much. I just wanted to point that out briefly. Again, this has been a long process. The developer hired the DPC, a design firm, in 2019 to design the proposed Chlor Station Development. You may not know DPC, but you may know their developments across the United States, including vibrant communities like Seaside and Watercolor Florida, and the close by Norton Commons development. DPC has been involved in every step, designing the physical community with the Chlor Jones team, drafting the SMART code, which we call the TND standards that's before you today. And as was discussed by staff, there was a design charrette in 2019 where members of the public could come and look at the site and make recommendations. And as a result of those recommendations, you got this master plan that you have before you. There have been multiple meetings with planning staff, meetings with neighbors, leading to proposed binding elements that were discussed earlier by staff. And most importantly, in order to do this development, Crestwood had to create the section 236 of the zoning, of its zoning code, essentially because developments like this, that you see, you can see the town center here, very attractive developments like this typically are difficult to do in a Euclidean zoning regime. So this allows for more design flexibility, and it creates transects that creates a space like this, which will be really, I think, a jewel for the Crestwood community as you get off Interstate 71, which will, this is basically about a quarter mile from that exit. The result of the proposed development, the SMART code and the master plan, is an attractive, walkable, and vibrant addition to the city of Crestwood. You'll have a new full-service hospital serving patients in a convenient location, and adding new good jobs to the city and county. Briefly, I want to discuss why this zoning is appropriate, PND, and why the existing appropriate zoning is inappropriate, which is the requirement under Kentucky law for a rezoning. Essentially, R2, R2A, residential, CO1, and C4 are inappropriate because mixed-use zoning in this particular location is what is called for in the land use plan. It's what's called for in the comp plan. And basically, it's what is appropriate for an area like this that's right off the interstate. Our firm provided an eight-page purpose and intent statement of the, how this development complies with the comp plan. I'm going to just touch on a few of these goals that I think are particularly relevant, and then move on to Gant's presentation. Goal LU3 is to plan for economic development that provides for increased tax revenues with a wide variety of employment opportunities that support the maintenance of a high level of community facilities and services, and provide job opportunities for future Oldham Countons. This development satisfies that objective under LU3 by providing a comprehensive mixed-use development where buildings and structures integrate multiple uses in one area by fostering smart growth in Crestwood, and providing many job opportunities, including at the several civic buildings, and most notably at the proposed hotel and the state-of-the-art Baptist healthcare hospital located in the development. Transportation goal T2 is to coordinate the major thoroughfare plan with other modes of travel, including bus transit, rail, pedestrian, and bicycle, to comprehensively address mobility issues and needs within Oldham County. This development will satisfy this goal with its focus on bicycle and pedestrian pathways and general walkability. The development plans to offer a park-and-ride shuttle stop located at the town center in order to reduce the total number of vehicles on the road and encourage walking and biking, excuse me. Goal CF5 is to provide a system of public parks, diverse recreation facilities, open spaces, and greenways that support the preservation of the county's natural and scenic resources, wildlife habitats, and serves neighborhoods and communities. The development complies with this, as it will provide access to an extensive park and open space system throughout approximately 115 acres of the total development will remain open space. With that, I'll move it over. I do briefly want to just show here, it's already been discussed, section 236, which was passed in 2021, is what we're under. And here is the SMART code that was previously discussed. If you have any questions about that later, I'm happy to answer, and I'll move into Gant's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Barkley.
Hey, everyone. I'm Gant Jones. I'm the son of Carl LaClor Jones, one of the owners, and nephew of Lee Clor, the other owner. This project is near and dear to us. It's our family project. It's been, the property's been in our family since 1808. I'm eighth generation. We've come to the point that farming isn't conducive for us anymore, considering all the children have moved on to professional jobs. And it was realized, I think, in the late 60s and early 70s, when 71 came through and a highway exit was developed in the middle of the farm, that one day it would be developed. Since then, in the 80s, in our anticipation, we've done measures to help with development in the future, as far as getting sewers on the property, incorporating it to the city, and doing that fill site adjacent to the old 329 intersection.
Turn the microphone, yeah, turn it right towards your mouth, and then if you can, speak a little louder. There's fans in the back.
Okay, I'm sorry. I tend to speak quickly, too. I'm going to try to slow it down.
You've got 40 more minutes.
I know, I know. That's the problem. We've got a lot to talk about. A little bit of history, too, going back. What I present here is some pictures of the original deed. We were not the original owners. We bought this from the original owners. This is a deed back from 1784 that we have in our possession. This is the first deed on the property prior to being natural, when it was naturalized. Another one thing I'd like to show, this is the old map of the Crestwood area. Can I see Beard Station, the train tracks here? And up here, you see the Zachary Chlor Distillery. That is where the family property is located.
Hey, Gant.
Yes.
I don't believe our graphics are changing as you run through this.
Oh, really? Okay. You guys don't see this on your screens?
No. We're still seeing that. Is that where you want to be?
Yes, I'm working on this one.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay. Well, this might, okay. Hopefully, we'll be able to see this. So, well, so, you know, since, through the years, as we've been anticipating development, we've done a master plan in the late 80s, early 90s. It's primarily residential with some commercial. We're glad we didn't fall through with that. But during that time, we've also had propositions for a truck stop selling the property, different type of strip centers for, you know, retail or fireworks. And we turned them all down because this property is important to us, and we didn't want to do anything that we weren't going to look back with disappointment. And I will get into what the efforts we've pursued in trying to make this more of a quality-driven project and a legacy for our family. Property, as stated before, is what is highlighted here, four different parcels representing around 500 acres. This is 71. This is 329 coming through, the bypass and old 329. This is the Crestwood Baptist Church. So what we're trying to do is unusual for typical developments in Oldham County. Typical housing developments, you're very familiar with, with single-family. How that's done is pretty straightforward. What we're trying to do is something the next step above that, which is labeled a traditional neighborhood development. And what that means is that we are trying to do a development that focuses more on the pedestrian and less on the vehicle. It also tries to influence the building itself to be more interactive with the public realm. And I'll help just explain that a little bit later. And then kind of looking at mixed-use buildings. Trouble with our current zoning is you don't have those opportunities that, where you can put retail and residential together, that makes it more dynamic and better in a community. These are a couple examples of your TNDs. I have up here Kintlands in Hartness, South Carolina. We decided, we had, we knew we wanted to move forward with planning this out, so we got a few proposals from a few different planning firms, and we decided to go with DPC. DPC is really well-known for starting the new urbanist movement, and they've been the predecessors for, you know, helping develop this, this new type of urban planning that is looking at something more dynamic in nature. Our project lead was Matt Lambert. He is really well-informed and involved with, he is currently basically the director of new urbanism now, as well as he is a council member for the transect studies, which is basically our zoning code that we're using, which is called the SMART code. He's a guy you call to, if you have questions about the SMART code, and he helped write all that for us. So back in 2019, we did was a design charrette. If you're not familiar with that term is, it's a week-long intensive design period where the planners have the opportunity to bring in all the constituencies that would be involved with this project, be it utility companies, the school board, KYTC, officials within the county. Jim Solomon, I think his first day on the job, he actually showed up at the charrette. Jim Urban was heavily involved with the charrette as well. In addition to that, we invited public. We invited people that were surrounding neighbors to us. We invited people that would be in favor, and people we assumed that would be opposed to it. We wanted feedback from everybody during that process. So here's some, just if you, is it up on your old screen yet? Okay, good. These are just some sketches that were done during the charrette process. And then, once we, after that, we started to hardline the design. And so as you can see here, this was part of the design in the initial first phase. And if you can see, the north parcel never got developed. We were in the process of hardlining it when Baptist showed interest in this project, and it really changed our trajectory of it. It's not something we considered that would be part of this because of scale of it. We never anticipated in our community a hospital would want to locate here. But the more and more we thought about it, it really made a lot of sense. So we kind of designated them to be in that north parcel. We thought, being in the town center, it might disrupt the quality that we're trying to bring as a community. And I'll get into a little bit about the zoning strategy, and how hospitals and industry and school campuses and things like that kind of break the norm of this zone and have this zoning typology, and have to be set up in their own special district. But here's an example of, you know, what happened. And then, when they came along, we helped, had a second charrette with them to help plan the north parcel, where DPC came in once again for a week charrette. So what is the SMART code in form-based zoning? I'm going to kind of go through this to help clarify it a little bit for you all, to help explain how it differs from what we're accustomed to. So what we are accustomed to is Euclidean zoning. Basically, it's a separation of uses in plan. So as you can see, this is the existing zoning that we have on the property, R2, R2A, conservation, and C4. It's separated by delineable lines. Here's commercial, here's residential. This is as much residential you can put in this section, and there's no mix of uses. So it really, it challenges trying to develop a better quality space from our perspective. So during the zoning process, or during the charrette process, sorry, we were planning on using the Oldham County PUD. That's basically the planned unit development that allows to write your own zoning code, but we saw challenges in it and didn't think it could achieve the higher level of quality of what we're trying to do. So during that process, Jim Urban recommended, maybe we should think about this as using the SMART code to help define this. And working with Jim on it and DPC, we helped to develop it and to kind of see it through, and then start to adopt the form-based zoning called SMART code. So I'm going to explain what this is. SMART code is not, in plan, divided up by uses. In plan, it's divided up by density. It's about context. It's about where you are within the context, whether it be a natural surrounding or urban surrounding, helps to find what use is appropriate for that space. So it doesn't separate commercial and residential. It allows for commercial and residential to occupy the same building. So transect is broken up into six zones, T1 being the natural zone, no housing or no development, and gradually gets denser and denser up to T6. We're looking at zones between T3 and T5, and technically a T1 zone with some of our natural areas. So what, we are used to seeing this in plan that helps to delineate the different areas of zoning. This is what we're proposing in plan, helps delineate the different areas of transects. So the purple would be the T5, the denser zones, as you kind of see in these different areas, that allows for commercial, and allows for residential as well. And then as it kind of spreads out from there, it gets less dense in nature down to T3, which is primarily single-family. And then the north quadrant, as you can see is red, is what's considered a healthcare district. This is the type of, kind of a use that kind of breaks away from mixed-use ability, making it hard to put housing in there, certain types of retail, just like industrial would be or a school campus would be. So it becomes a special healthcare district. In our zoning TND standards, it has its own chapter dedicated to itself to help kind of define its zoning standards. Back to the master plan, so I'm going to start getting into detail about what, how the master plan lays out, just roughly speaking. Town center located on the 329 bypass. This is Dove Field Trace going back. Another commercial node, what we call the fill site, where's the old park parking lot. A commercial node, we are retaining seven acres adjacent to the hospital. And then other denser zones that are more, could allow for some commercial in there based on the transect, but higher density in housing locations. So, commercial broken out, just reiterating what I was talking about, the three major nodes we're looking at here for commercial. Square footage, we're looking around 750,000 square feet of commercial. That does not include the healthcare district, which is an additional 886,000 square feet. That does not include the healthcare district, which is an additional 886,000 square feet. Residential, as you can see, kind of it's denser. We have a lot of different types of residential, from single-family, standalone, single-family attached, multifamily, four-plex, six-plex mansion condo units or apartment units, townhouses, as well as potentially multifamily buildings that are larger in units, as well as live-work. One thing to bring up too is what that density relates to in our own zoning. So, chlorstation, as I kind of wrote down here, is 5.94 units per acre. It's not too dissimilar from R2A, which is 5.81 units per acre. It is dense, but it has a lot of natural space in the aggregate as you go over the entirety of 500 acres is similar to R2A. Open space. We have retained a lot of open space, slightly over the third of the property will be open space. The natural area, all of our valleys create a wonderful opportunity for walking trails and maintaining it as natural space, connecting it, the development with kind of a green ribbon that runs through it. But we also have a lot of formal open spaces in different types of locations for stormwater, which we hope that any type of stormwater location could be multi-use for playing fields or whatnot. Transportation, we can get into more detail about this. A lot has already been stated about this. Dine has done a traffic study to analyze the intersections and the appropriateness of how we are exiting or how many lanes would be required exiting, or if any new lanes were required to the existing infrastructure. We brought up what the 329 study, the bypass study, to help redefine it in nature, since it's really not functioning as a regional connection anymore, it's functioning as a town road more so. Our vision and hope is that it becomes something more like, not a reduction of lanes, but more like that Hearstborn connection between Brownsboro Road and Westport Road, rather than something that seems very utilitarian in nature and not very desirable. Additionally, we're looking at the old 329 connection, the jug handle connection, which will help consolidate what we will need as an entry to our development on this side into, connecting into the existing old 329 to reduce the number of entries onto the bypass itself. This, as mentioned, was studied as a version of the study I'd done, I think, in 2017. We have been in talks with the highway department, kind of making them aware. We've had a meeting recently with the highway department and kind of coordinating, and as they're in the design phase of exit 14 right now, helping them to be informed of what we're doing. So, there's just no surprises. Additionally, one thing we do need to mention is on the hospital. I think John, when he comes up, Talbot, when he comes up to present the hospital side, will talk about the old Brownsboro connection and how that will be redefined as a more safer connection at that location north of the map. We can talk more specifically about our network of roads. I'll just leave this here. If we have questions, we can always come back to it. But we are using alley systems. The idea is that we're fronting roads with buildings, not garages, so garages are behind the house to help influence the quality of the development itself. Stormwater, we developed this during the charrette phase and a little bit into hardlining. We see a lot of different stormwater basins across this property. This is basically, this satisfies what we need in design, but further engineering will help to further develop this. And of course, when we get to the TRC phase with each phase, it'll, you know, help be determined. We are also looking at potentially using regional detention, inline stream detention as a possibility. We approached the highway department as maybe possibly teaming up. They're adding a lot more asphalt, they're dumping a lot more water towards our direction. I don't know if it'll be a possibility, but we're hopeful they seemed as interested. Phase plan, it will be market driven, but this is kind of how we see it playing out. Phase one, we are anticipating will happen, close to where the Baptist Church is, where Dove Field Trace goes back. The idea is what we want to present to the community is the palette. We want to show commercial, we want to show, I'm sorry, variety of residential from single-family, row housing, multifamily, and what that might be architecturally and just the feel of the community itself. In the town center, just as a case in point, where markets might drive us to do something a little different, we have designed in here to have a grocery store, and we have approached grocery stores. If some, if a grocery store said today, said, "We want to be part of this project ASAP", it would change our phase to incorporate them in the first phase, just as an example. So, as we go back, this is kind of how we're proceeding from the bypass back to our later phases in the very back of the property. And we do anticipate this could be as long as a 30-year project. During the neighborhood presentation and since then, we've met with the local subdivisions, HOAs, and different people within the community to talk about the way our properties kind of meet back up to their properties. Mostly, in all of our residential situations, we have single-family that backs up to single-family homes. Spring Hill, in case we have a gas easement that runs through here, of course, we cannot build on that gas easement, so there's no anticipation that, or we're not going to disturb any of the natural edge that's there currently, nor will we be building on the gas line. Over at Camden Manor, we have seven or six single-family lots that back up that are in similar in scale to Camden Manor as it is today with natural space. This portion here is a little bit higher density, what we're looking at potentially as a cottage court scenario, which is smaller single-family homes at that location. And then, over here next to Magnolia Place, we have one or two lots, single-family that back up to Magnolia Place. This location, we do have commercial that backs up to residential but has a buffer between. So, what I'm going to do now is talk about the, our TND standards, traditional neighborhood standards, or our zoning code for this project, and I'm kind of going to go through a case study of what it is. But first off, I just want to recognize, there's six chapters here. There's got the general provisions, more administrative in nature, subdivision, which the subdivision component helps define the blocks and how the plan itself, the master plan, is developed. Then, the special district, which is talking about the hospital itself and how the healthcare district is set up. And then, our building and site standards, which is really the mean bone of it, of the zoning, to help people understand how a building is placed on a lot and how it relates to the street. And then, we have our street section. So, here's kind of the example of looking at a commercial lot right up front. This is Dove Field Trace going back, and if you can imagine right off to the right, if somebody purchased that property, how would they cite that building on that property using our zoning standards? Well, first off, they need to understand what transect they're in. They're in the T5 transect, so it allows for them to have commercial at this location. So, they would go to our zoning code, and we'll have diagrams as well as text that help explain how the building sits on the site. This first section is very familiar to way zoning works, setbacks. So, here, it's just like Euclidean zoning, and it sets up the setbacks at this location. It's pretty straightforward. Secondly, then you go into building, it talks about height, maximum six stories. In this case study, I'm just doing a three-story building. But then, slowly starts deviating and becoming more prescriptive on how the building needs to be placed, as well as how it addresses the street. And this is where the zoning, the form-based zoning and the SMART code start to deviate from what we're used to zoning. Here, it's trying to reinforce the building to have public participation with the street. It wants, and I'll go through this and kind of it will start to make sense, it wants to enhance the street condition. So, the ground, you know, unlike our zoning, it requires glazing. So, ground floor needs to have 60% glazing, the other floor 25% glazing minimum, that's different. Then, it talks about the entrance frequency of 75 feet maximum. The idea here is that when you're in an urban environment, there's nothing worse than just a blank facade of a building that doesn't interact, it takes away from the opportunity of the street itself. Then, we get into the actual facade and the front of the building, and characteristically, when you have front yard standards, about how close it sits and what happens between the building and the right-of-way. In this case scenario, you're looking at a no-yard situation because you're looking at retail or restaurants, so it's more in the urban environment, you want to push up to that street edge the best you can. And then, it talks about frontage elements that you need to define, and you have specific frontage elements that are allowed. In this case, you might go with the frontage elements that are shopfront, and that goes through how the building addresses with different shopfront elements, all of which is trying to reinforce the building as an active participant. And it doesn't just stop with commercial, but it also translates to residential. So, residential, or, you know, as you can see, we have frontage yards here. You can see, these are more commercially integrated in the T5 district, but as we get down to the T4 and T3 districts, which are primary residential, it still talks about the front yard condition and how that's participating, as well as the frontage elements with residential, where it might be a front porch, or it might be what in this case is a terrace. These are just two examples that I took out. There are others in the zoning code itself. And then, parking. This is pretty much similar to what you're used to parking. Parking is established by occupancy counts, so, or square footage. So, commercial, in this example, you'd have three spaces per 1,000 square feet, so over here, we have 11,000 square foot footprint, so we're looking for 33 for commercial. And then, residential, say there's 16 units, one per unit, 16. What parking is allowed for in our development, to be clear, you'll have, you can have a parking lot associated with the building, but any street, streets adjacent to the building and has parking, you can use those in your calculations as well. And then, lastly, what's important about this is the governance itself. So, we have the traditional neighborhood standards that reinforce the zoning and the placement of buildings, and how the building relates to the street, but then, we also have architectural standards, which helps to make everything more cohesive in aesthetics. And then, of course, our deed restrictions with both commercial and residential, which takes things a little bit of a step further, that helps to kind of set up standards or rules for wildlife management, as an example, or rules for dark skies initiative for our street light systems and facade lighting and whatnot. So, I'm going to go through and kind of talk more, and we're getting, we're scoping in a little bit more in areas, so just talk about our town center a little bit. So, as I mentioned, this is the bypass here, Dove Field Trace going back, the Baptist Church here. This is actually the farm entry on the bypass, whoops, sorry, coming back. This is the yellow house, if you're familiar with it. This is where the existing tobacco barn is, is black with a red roof. Town center, ideally, we could get a grocery store. Like I mentioned, we're trying to do that. It may not be possible, but it is our goal to. If not, we might have to pivot and think of a different use that might work at this location. You have a plaza space in the center. We've coordinated with the library, that this could potentially be a future site. Things are shifting, and at one time, we thought they might be going downtown Crestwood, but if in the future, we would really entertain the idea of having a library on our property. And then, taking some of, kind of keeping the old house on-site, as well as maybe renovating and redoing the barn as an event center. So, that's just kind of a rendering of what the town center might be. This is the road going back to Dove Field Trace here. This is the bypass, if you can imagine putting a median in the bypass, both to help make it more enjoyable as you're driving along, but it also has a traffic calming quality to it. Here's the house, this location here. Kind of aesthetically, you might see we're looking, doing pitched roofs, kind of the idea during our architectural charrette, which was the third charrette we did, we kind of went back to where the family originally came from in Germany, in Segen, Germany, which is in West Germany, and some of the images we took from there, and kind of used that to help influence how we might architecturally do this. Not to say we're going to be literal with it, but we're using it as a stepping stone for architectural design. This is the jug handle. This is old 329 coming down, which currently kind of terminates in here. The idea is it swoops out and then comes back in as a more of a 90-degree angle, sorry, at this location. Commercial here, residential behind. This would be, at this location, idea about putting a hotel. If you imagine, as you come off the highway and you're driving towards Crestwood, it's a pinnacle moment. So, here might be, the idea is to put in something that might highlight the end of the street or the termination of the view corridor coming up that hill. So, as you can see, this is coming from the highway up the bypass, potentially a hotel location. And this is the jug handle coming back with commercial that wraps around. Residential, since we have a variety of residential, I want to kind of go through it a little bit. We also have a lot of topography, so we have a lot of challenges of thinking how you handle topography, but also, I think, in a development like this that costs a lot of money for infrastructure and quality of amenities in the urban space, it kind of cascades to the cost of lots. So, we are challenged with thinking about how we can create some affordability to this development. It is a goal of ours, we do not want to make this out of reach. So, this little section here, this is the interstate here, there's a valley that comes through, there's a hillside that comes up. So, here, we're looking at single-family lots that can adapt to topography very easily, but as you get up into flatter sections, the density starts to reveal itself. So, here's kind of like, you know, a snippet of everything that could happen. So, as the hillside drops off, you have a different type of housing type that we've looked at, which is called a treehouse typology. I'll show you an image in a section. It's a, you know, roughly a square footprint of a building, 25 feet by 25 feet, and it's more vertical where bridges across to connect to the hillside. It allows for flexibility and shift in topography while keeping your tree canopy and not trying to destroy it. This center here is the idea, maybe you could utilize the detention basin with a playing field adjacent to a playground, row housing and single-family housing. So, this is an example of a treehouse typology. This is from North Carolina, just outside of Asheville, at a development called Cheshire. Another type of typology we're looking at doing initially in the first phase is what's called MUSE. A MUSE is basically developed in England, it's kind of a transformation of row stable barns or carriage houses. So, they transform the carriage houses into full living dwellings in modern times, and it's a typology we'd like to use here. So, basically, if you can imagine, it's a 25 by 25 footprint, first floor is garage, and the residential is above it. And this is kind of a similar aesthetic or feel of what that would be like, but it starts to hit at a better price point and affordability. And then, lastly, this is what was called a cottage court. You're looking, they're smaller footprint homes. They don't necessarily have garages, they have street parking or assigned parking areas for them. They address open space and the kind of standalone, but they become more affordable, you know, one, two-bedroom homes as another strategy. And this is just an example of dealing with slope and how single-family might inhabit that slope. You know, we're used to the homes fronting the street. Well, it's becoming more and more commonplace that homes are starting to front open space too. So, in this example, that's how you go up the hill with an open space, and the homes kind of address the open space rather than the street, and then, access to the homes with vehicle would be in a side alley condition. I'm going to turn it over to Baptists for their presentation.
Thank you. Good morning. Clint Cahoe, 6609 Heritage Hills Drive, Crestwood, Kentucky. I serve as the president of Baptist Health LaGrange and have done so for six years. I've worked at Baptist Health for 18 years, and I've lived in Crestwood for 11 years. So, this project is near and dear to us at Baptist Health. So this project is near and dear to us at Baptist Health, certainly. We've been providing care as Baptist Health to Kentucky citizens. In 2024 will mark 100 years. So throughout Baptist Health, we are preparing for our second century of health care. Significantly, here in Oldham County, Baptist Health has been the operator of the hospital for 30 years. We celebrated that milestone last year. So as we are looking toward the future and preparing for the growth that's going to come to Oldham County, we need the opportunity to grow with our community. Our mission is to demonstrate the love of Christ by providing and coordinating care and improving health in our communities. To do that into the future with the growth projections that are coming, our hospital has to get bigger to be able to accommodate the needs of our community. We see potentially a growth factor of a little over 12%. Our current infrastructure that we have at the hospital would not accommodate, or we very challenged to accommodate, growth of that nature into our health services. That growth rate as a percentage that we're seeing is higher than any of our other Baptist Health markets in the state of Kentucky and all of our markets where we operate. We operate eight hospitals in Kentucky and one in southern Indiana for a total of nine. We're looking at what we need to do for our communities moving forward, and this is imperative for us at Baptist Health to care for our communities as we're moving forward. We are concerned of our ability to accommodate the needs of the community into the future, and we also know that patients prefer convenience. And having a second healthcare campus in our community, an outpatient campus here in LaGrange, and an inpatient campus with an associated outpatient services in Crestwood is going to provide convenience, more convenience to our community as it grows, for our patients, our community, to stay here in Oldham County where they really want to be. Our project, just to clarify, will relocate the hospital component of what we do in LaGrange. It will relocate the hospital to Crestwood. Without the expansion and the second location, we will be greatly challenged in meeting the needs of our community. The Robert Wood Johnson Foundation does studies across the country about health and wellness in our communities, and Oldham County is in the tops of health outcomes in the state of Kentucky. We want it to continue to be there, and we know that access and convenience are part of what will help us to do that into the futures we plan. What's most important to us is being able to care for our patients and care for our community, but this project will provide an economic impact to our community as well. While we have a lot of planning that we still need to do in detail of the services and locations between LaGrange and Crestwood, we can estimate, looking at similarly sized hospitals that we have within Baptist Health, a potential of 300 net new jobs to our community to care for our citizens. That's really at the hospital level. That does not even include necessarily what we would see in growth from our medical group perspective, medical practices and other associated care that comes alongside the hospital. So I know we're here today to talk more detail about the project in plan, so I'm going to turn it over to John Talbot to do so, but I really just wanted to start this off from a Baptist perspective about the imperative that we see so that we can take care of our community that we have been blessed to do for the past 30 years. Thank you.
John Talbot. My address is 1,000 North Hurstborn Parkway, Louisville, Kentucky, 40223. Eric Sen from LD&amp;D is going to also give some comments. I see that I'm down to under six minutes for the remainder. I'm going to try to be succinct, but if I...
Mr. Barkley and Mr. Talbot, if you need more time, we can make that allowance, but we do need to go ahead and make that allowance if that's what you're going to need.
If we could get 10 more minutes, I think would be sufficient.
All right. Can I get a motion on the floor, Ted? Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Second? Thank you, Mr. Marsh. All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you very much. And with that allotted time, you all have been very patient. I will try to be succinct and be shorter than that as we go through it. I'm sure you all have a lot of questions. This is a, first of all, a really exciting project. It's a privilege for me and my office to be involved in it with Baptist Health and the Joneses family. It's kind of interesting, when I've been around this location, this building many times, when you go into the meeting room over to my right, you can see a big picture with the Clory Farm Development on that wall to give you some kind of idea of the amount of years that have gone into planning this development, and to have it finally here is pretty exciting. But the amount of time that has gone on and the amount of thought and the attention to detail on this project has really been extensive. Two years ago, you all approved the changes to your zoning regulations to accommodate this development. 236 was specifically put in place for the Joneses' property, and then Crestwood also approved it in their ordinance. So we are teed up, primed, and ready to go. I wanted to give, there were several questions at the beginning, and I know they were answered, but I wanted to hit on the points again in terms of what authority will you all have going forward and what do we do? In addition to all the years of planning, we had the concept plan, we had a neighborhood meeting, we had a pre-application meeting, multiple times that we meet with staff, and now we have the master plan, which comes forward. And the master plan sounds like it's really final, but it's truly not. As Mr. Urban mentioned, it is conceptual in nature. And Commissioner Douglas, you asked, well, will you have to come back? You do have to come back in certain instances, but assuming we stay in compliance with the master plan, then in that case, we would just come back for TRC. Your engineers and your all's agencies would review the project, just like they always do, for site development, and they'll go through all of that. We will have to comply with our T&amp;D, our own development code, and with Baptist, we'll also have to comply often with your all's existing code. Where we do not have things in the T&amp;D that address certain parts of your all's code, your code is the backdrop. So we are not avoiding any of that. Baptist was adamant that they wanted to, they liked your code, and so frankly, a lot of times, they thought it was more appropriate. So we will have that. In addition to TRC, you will also have staff review the project when we come back, and at that time, staff can request any updated infrastructure analysis. That could relate to stormwater, could relate to sewers. Most probably, it's going to relate to traffic. With a 30-year build-out, we did have a very detailed traffic study. It has indicated that we're going to need to make some improvements, but a lot of that is going to depend on the time and what else is developed as we go along the way. And listening to the comments from Mr. Solomon, it's funny, I had highlighted the exact same sentence as you had. And again, in the study, it says, "All intersections will need further refinement as the development plans for each section are prepared." So we anticipate, as we come forward with our phased plans to TRC, we will have to update that traffic analysis specifically for that phased plan. If improvements need to be made, they will have to be made. What we'll see is, we have already, through Gant Jones', reserved right-of-way along 329, the property along 329 to the north, where our project is to accommodate improvements as they need to be made. Now, in terms of things that would come back to the planning commission, if there are changes to the master plan, there's two types. One is minor. Those can be approved by the administrator, which would be Mr. Urban currently, and there's also major changes. Major changes could come back to the planning commission. You will have that right. That is set up in the procedure, and I would anticipate with the project of this size, that's probably what would happen. In our T&amp;D standards, we even have written in that if we increase the building square footage by more than 20%, then we're obligated to come back. I mean, there's no question that that has to come back to the planning commission for review. So there's lots of instances where you all will have another look at this if we vary from what our plan is today. So with that, kind of highlighting some of those points that were earlier hit, I wanted to touch base on them. This shows that our, I'm going to call it a development plan, although it's truly not a development plan, but it gives you an idea of what we're looking at. That's our hospital, which would be very close to I-71. We wanted to have that front I-71 because that's the place where it would have least impact on the neighbors around us. Also, it gives us a lot of good visibility. In addition to that, in the middle, in the orange buildings, we've titled that mixed use. Now, to clarify, mixed use often means where you have residential and commercial. That's not this type of mixed use. This type of mixed use would be things like doctors' offices, maybe nurses' offices or nursing school, things that would be, that would relate to the health-type industry, things that would be, that would relate to the health-type industry. And we can additionally have accessory uses that may not be directly related to the health industry, but, you know, in a development this size, you do need some other services that would fit in, some accessory-type roles. And then in the top, when you get closest to the residential properties to our north, we put our senior living centers. Senior living centers are typically the least impactful developments you can possibly have. You don't have a lot of traffic, you don't have a lot of noise, you don't have a lot of sound, light, or odors from that type of development. And so we tried to push the least intense development that's going to be to the furthest north of this site, because we do not want to have any impact, any negative impact that we can avoid with our neighbors. With that said, we've had a lot of meetings with the neighbors, particularly with the farm to the north, and I think her name was Bernadette Walters, but Howard Foriel has had a lot of discussions with her. We've talked to her about buffering and so forth, which I'll get to. The last point is, we have some community park spaces. As Gant mentioned, having open spaces, places that people can use to walk, to enjoy the sunlight, not just have all buildings in dense development, we have those incorporated in our site as well. This shows our road network. I think you'll have seen that to the top. That would be, I think what we're calling that generally Baptist Boulevard. The middle road is the, let's see, Judge Carden Boulevard. Thank you. And then the one to the south, the furthest to the south, that would be the ambulance road. This shows some of our uses that are around us. Again, we've got the Old Coach subdivision to the north that I mentioned. We've got Crestwood Commons Apartments to the east. And I want to point out, if you look at those buildings, a little bit hard to see, but those buildings are very close to the property line. I think they get 25 feet from the property line. We wanted to pull ours back, especially when we get around the uses that are not commercial, residences and agricultural uses, to pull that back, which we've done. And then in the south, we've got the mini-storage and commercial zoning. This shows our drainage, and I'm going to bring up Eric Sen to discuss some of the stormwater impacts they'd have and how we're handling those.
Thank you, John. Eric Sen, Land Design Development, 503 Washburn Avenue, Louisville, 40222. As John mentioned, the areas you see in light blue are where we're proposing detention basins at this point. We want to make sure that we weren't increasing runoff of all the adjacent properties. So what we'll be working with, the county engineer and all the local agencies to make sure we meet those requirements. I want to make sure that we, especially to the north, we understand they're single families. We want to make sure that we're not increasing the peak runoff to those houses. So we make sure we include a detention basin along that side. And then we're also along I-71 for the hospital area, might be in another detention basin and reutilizing the one in the center of the property.
Eric, thank you very much. The next slide, this shows some of our buffers. And the white bubbles, that really gives the details, and the red and the gray ones kind of the broader ones. But you can see the red dash line. That's the buffering along the residences and agricultural to the north. We have 100-foot building setback. It's 25-foot parking setback and a 12-foot landscaping buffer in those areas. What you'll also see on the couple of slides later is the amount of trees that are in existence that additionally give us buffering from those residences. We really do not want to have any negative impact on them. Now, as you go to the, around the apartments, there we condensed, compressed our buffering, just like they're 25-foot. We kept the building setback at 25 feet there, parking setback at 15, and the landscape buffer at 15. With the warehouse to the south, we didn't have any buffering effectively, and that's warehouse and mini-storage, so really no reason to do it there. But we tried to make sure where we are going to have much of an impact, we have the most significant buffering. This gives you an aerial, just the oriental. I've turned this around, so now the bottom of the screen is the north side, the top of the screen is the south side, where you can see the many warehouses. Here, you can see the 100-foot buffering, and then I've circled the trees. Those trees are all going to remain. Most are not even on our property. They're either on the property line, or they're actually on the other property. So there's significant screening in place, and we will also be adding to our landscape buffer in addition to those. We have a traffic study in this. I'm not going to go through all of this in detail because of the time. I do just want to make sure for housekeeping matters, we've got our traffic study, our T&amp;D, and the design standards. Hopefully, those are all part of the record, and you all have all had a chance to review that. Mr. Chairman, I hope, can you all confirm that's all a part of the record, just so I don't have to go through all of that?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. Thank you. This shows in the circles on the traffic study, the places that Diane Zimmerman analyzed, and I'm sure you all have taken a look at that. And then this is our proposed stacking. This is not definitive, but this gives a general idea of what we anticipate to have at this hospital. I've called it kind of a full-service type hospital. The people in the healthcare, they've called it a little bit differently, but you can see all the type of services that they would include. This is intended to be a hospital that can serve Oldham County, Crestwood, LaGrange, a lot of the areas beyond this footprint. And lastly, this is a rendering of the hospital buildings, and I'll just show you both of those very quickly. And this would be the side that faces, I think this is the side that faces I-71. Is that right? Yes. With that, I'm four minutes short. I told you I'd finish quickly. Thank you very much for your time. And we've got our full team with Clint Cahoe, Howard Foriel, Diane Zimmerman, and the gentleman from Land Design Development here as part of our team to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Mr. Barkley, anything else from your team?
I don't think so, Chair. I think at this point, if the commission has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Is anyone else present who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone else present who wishes to speak in favor? Please approach. We'll need to get you sworn. We'll need to get your names and addresses for the record.
Hello. Mark Church, 6002 Stockton Court, Crestwood.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
You may proceed.
I'm speaking in favor for a few different reasons. One, I believe that over the five-year process, it's been well-thought-out. Many considerations taken into place from traffic to schools to stormwater runoff. But the main thing that I take away from this is we have a rare opportunity in today's development climate to have a local developer that lives and cares about the community to do this project, as opposed to a national developer that has only their stockholders in mind. That's the main thing that I'd like for you all to take away. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's get your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is John Oliva. I live at 5301 Garden Drive in the Camden Manor Park Lake subdivision.
Let's get you sworn real quick.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Again, I support these efforts to develop this area for many of the same reasons that were just stated. I appreciate the concern and the quality of the considerations that have gone into the development of this property. If you look at some of the alternatives that could have been here, you know, you look at strip centers, other low-quality developments, I think this really reflects what I like to, I think, of as Crestwood quality. The inevitability of development for this property is probably going to go without saying. So I think that to have a beautiful master plan like this, to have accessibility from my neighborhood into this project in the long term is going to be of great value to the value of my property, and I really look forward to this, and I think this is just a great opportunity for Crestwood to grow and to become a better place to live. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliva. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? All right. There being none, we will move into questioning of the applicant and of those who may be opposed to the application. Want to take a break? Everybody good? We want to get, let's get a quick break. Okay, five? Five good? All right, five-minute recess.
All right, we'll go ahead and come back to order now. Next phase of the hearing is questioning of the applicant and those opposing the application, excuse me, testimony and questions by those opposing the application. And you have 60 minutes. So if anyone would like to provide testimony or ask questions, I'm going to first ask that whoever intends to speak, I want to get everyone to stand, will go ahead and swear you in, and then as you approach the podium, we'll need your name and address for the record. So whoever would like to approach, please stand now and raise your right hand.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, who would like to go first? Please approach.
Hey, my name is Larry Molynek. I'm at 7209 Spring Hill Trace. I'm at Crestwood. I'm an adjacent property owner. I have spoken at the...
If you can get a little closer.
Okay, that's fine. I've spoken at the August 22 meeting, community meeting, expressed my concern. I also was unable to attend the September 20 meeting of the technical review committee, but I sent a letter to your Mr. Urban as well as to the developer. I didn't get any response from the Planning Commission, but I did get a response from Mr. Ramsey of the Development Group, and basically said they were proceeding with the plan regardless of my concern. Okay, my concern is the locating of a hotel in the intersection of 329 Bypass and 329. Currently, that's inside a residential area. Even in the proposed plan, it's adjacent to single-family homes. Okay? The access to that hotel includes an access off Old 329. My concerns about this are both noise and light pollution, which I understand will be mitigated by the developer, and that's fine. Other concern is around personal safety, locating a hotel where non-resident people will be frequenting that particular area, and particularly coming in off Old 329. The other concern I have is the traffic and congestion. We have experienced already the increased traffic and congestion that resulted from the designation of Spring Hill Trace as a collector road with the Brettwood Development. The...I'm aware of the changes that are underway to the intersection there, but the congestion is still, the traffic load and congestion is still very heavy in that area. Anyone who goes through there can see all the difficulty, especially when, under the current construction on I-71, that road is where a lot of people cut through in order to avoid 71. In any case, with the hotel, particularly with the access off of Old 329, that'll just add to the congestion, and even though some mitigation's going to occur with the current rearrangement of that intersection, it's still going to be very bad. I suggested in my letter a couple of things. One is, don't have access off 329, just have it off 329 Bypass. Other things I said was locate the hotel more in a commercial district, which is down toward the north on 329 Bypass toward Interstate 71, or even to the far south of, there's the bypass, down to the south side near the Walmart. And with the letter I got back from the developer was they have no plans to make any changes. And I think that's very inappropriate to locate a hotel immediately adjacent to these single-family homes in that area. So that's my concern.
Thank you, sir. Who would like to go next?
4634 Echo Valley Drive in Crestwood. I am the District 8 Constable, and I want to address a few issues. I agree with much of what was just said about traffic concerns. And right now, we have a situation, for example, just this morning, coming here, I-71 was shut down from beyond the 14, the southbound, up past the 17, gridlocked. People were bailing off the interstate onto 146. We come through Buckner, we have gridlocked school traffic. We get up here, we have a parking lot that's full, inadequate parking in our public building where we're supposed to have a capacity for a pretty big crowd, but we don't. So my point is that our capacity all over Oldham County is woefully inadequate right now, and we're ignoring that. Case in point, if you try to go through Crestwood during rush hour, okay, you're on 146 or 22, either way, you're going to have a backup in the morning going into Louisville that might extend back to Ash Avenue. In the evening, coming into Crestwood, you're going to be backed up from railroad back to Ash Avenue many nights. On the 22 side, you're up the hill past the Maples. You've got all this, and we haven't even plugged all these folks into the equation yet, and we can't even hardly move at times of day, especially during school times. We love to cluster all our schools together right in the middle of town, and then we wonder why we can't go anywhere during school hours, you know, when school is coming or going. So all of these things are big concerns that aren't being addressed, and yet you have a great, it's a traffic plan or whatever. You've got a book that says, as we address things, the state is going to look at this, the county's going to look at this, Crestwood's going to look at this. But right now, it's already broken. You're going to wait till it's hopelessly broken to plug in a turn lane here and a traffic signal there? That's not going to get it. Now, if we had some way of taking the folks in this community, and I think it's a beautiful community, don't get me wrong, if we could fence them in and say, don't go into Crestwood, get on the interstate and get out of Dodge that way, or come home that way and go into your little, you know, old-world community, that'd be great if we had some way to just keep that. But we want development in Crestwood. All of the commercial businesses there want development. You know, we want new people to come in as customers. Another case in point, Crestwood Mercantile just had their grand opening. It was a huge success. You couldn't find a parking spot anywhere in any part of Crestwood in any other lot. If you were going to have a funeral or go to the post office, you were out of luck. You go to the new temporary courthouse, they say, park at the Crestwood Christian Church because we didn't factor in enough parking. So there's so many things that don't get considered that impact this, and I think this is great. It looks wonderful, old-world charm. Everybody says, it's just like Norton Commons. We want to have a Norton Commons. I urge you to go on next door and read the stories about Norton Commons, okay? Their quality of life is spiraling down because they have high crime now. It was a great tax base, but we didn't put it into LMPD officers, so now they have lots of car break-ins that you read about. You have people, porch pirates have gone to a new level there. They follow the delivery truck down the street and get the stuff hot off the truck. They don't even wait till it sits on your porch for a while. So we've got to start thinking of all this stuff. Yes, this is charming, but if it all falls apart under the weight of added traffic, gridlock, where people can't get around, and increased crime, because now we have an infrastructure of people that we can't support with public services, and we're not doing a good job of that already. So I just urge you to think all this through. I think it's a great thing if we could control it, but along the way, we're going to have to make some very tough decisions very quickly, and it may mean widening 146, and it may mean widening 22, and a lot of things that are really terrible things to have to work with because they're very complicated. But you're talking about a huge complication factor right here that you want to dump into this, like somehow magically it's just all going to work out, and it's not. So I just urge you to just be very careful about that because things Mr. Urban mentioned, yeah, the bypass was going to connect to the Snyder. That's wonderful. Uh-oh, we didn't see it coming that Waldeck got historic status. And we're going to have a park and tark. Oh, they just discontinued the bus service to Oldham County, and now we have a beautiful lot that nobody ever uses. So all these things sound great on paper, but please, please be careful in their implementation that you don't really mess over lifestyles in Oldham County for the worse. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who would like to go next?
My name is Patty Weisman. I live at 3903 North Camden Lane in Crestwood. He mentioned the traffic, and this just fits right in. At first, it was my understanding, because they have the town square circling 329 with 500 acres, why couldn't the town square be somewhere else? We always compare this to Norton Commons, but as far as I'm, no, Norton Commons does not have six-story buildings in it. Norton Commons didn't commandeer the main road to the interstate and make it into a walking zone. And so I don't like having that town square on our main way to get there. And then it looks like, while there are single-family homes, it looks to me like there's more apartments in this than in Norton Commons. And from what I've seen, developers develop apartments, they hold them 10 or 20 years, and then the repairs start going up, so they get rid of them, and they just decline. Because if you look at the meadows over there behind Open Range, that was a beautiful complex in the 70s. I don't think anybody wants to live there now. It doesn't look good. So it looks like you're creating a slum, a future slum area. The other thing is you keep talking about Waldeck has made all of their property historical. 200 acres are historical. It's my understanding that connector is coming through. I just drove through and got stuck in all the construction traffic this morning coming here. It's coming out on Ash Avenue. It's still coming around, and my understanding is it's going to come out south of the bridge on 22. So if it's not going to continue coming up to the bypass, are you planning on going straight across and cutting North Camden Lane off and plowing through Udel? I think that needs to be addressed. And then with us having six stories buildings, has anyone addressed our fire capabilities? Do we have the machinery that can actually put out a six-story fire? And if not, who's going to be paying for that? It's going to be us.
Good morning. I'm Judy Crasket, 7415 Highway 329, Crestwood, Kentucky. I'm not opposed to the beautiful development you all are doing. It's just I agree with Barry and the other lady, we have to address the infrastructure first. And just for my personal reasons, I just want, and I tried to send this email to Mr. Urban of the traffic on 329 and what I experienced for living there for 43 years, although it's in the last 20 years, it's gotten worse and worse. And I have a lot of runoffs from people running and hitting my driveway, and they don't usually stop most times, but most of the time in June 9, this was one of the recent ones, that a lady overcorrected, she hit the driveway and, or the rocks in, that the, one time a dump truck lost its, blew a tire and landed in my front yard. So the State Highway Department fixed and put the rickrack, I caught a big rock, next to the highway and, you know, my yard, and so that seemed to help. But now, people have ran off the road so much that the, when they paved it in 2017, they keep running off, and it's about a foot where there's no shoulder. And I have to keep putting the rocks up around my driveways, and I put cones out in front of my driveway, so, you know, and I put out the little reflector things, but they keep, people keep running off, running those off too. So my concern is the traffic, and that goes along with everything else in Oldham County, like Barry mentioned, you know, we just kind of, it's a cluster, and I don't know how we can fix it, but, you know, we want more development in Crestwood. We do. We need all that. You know, it's amazing what they've developed there, and I think it's great. It's just, you know, some of these things that we have to address to get things fixed before it goes further. And I submit this to Mr. Urban, and I'll send some pictures of addressing like the flooding on the Brownsboro alternate, and more you put asphalt and concrete down, it's going, stormwater runoff is going to affect that too as well. So I apologize that you didn't get it yesterday, but maybe I didn't have it addressed correctly. But anyway, I appreciate being able to reserve my comments for that, and I'll, that's all I got to say.
I asked her to submit that. I'm going to put this in as an opposition letter, but it's really just comments, so that way we have it in the file.
All right. Anyone else wishing to provide opposition testimony, ask questions? I don't believe we got you sworn previously. We'll need to get you sworn.
Sir.
Raise your right. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
And you name and address for the record.
My name is Peter Hartman. Live in Camden Manor subdivision of 5311 Manor Court for the last 24 years. A number of the comments that I wanted to make and concerns that I wanted to articulate have been already addressed. So I have several that I want to share with you as well. First of all, the development for that property is in fact a given. That's foregone conclusion. You all are charged with the highest and best use of that development. God is not making any more dirt, and you're only going to get one shot to get this right, which is not going to be enough, I can promise you that. I've got experience in a 1,038-unit townhome development on 146 acres in southern New Jersey. It was a Philadelphia suburb. We had to put in a school as part of our approval. We had to run a sewer line six miles because we were literally taking a town named Thoroughfare, New Jersey, and doubling the size of that population. I can't begin to tell you what we had to do to road networks, our two-lane, this was all, even though it's New Jersey, it was all farmland, all farmland, more farmland than this project. There was nothing there. There was no bypass, there was nothing. We put it there. And we went through multiple design changes over about a 14-year timeframe. So I'm used to this project from the concept of a 25, 27, 30-year build-out. I'll be dead. I'm 70 years old. I'm never going to see it. I'm standing up here because I hope my kids buy that house that my wife and I live in, and I'm hoping that they raise our two grandchildren in this neighborhood. I have a grandson that's two, and I have a granddaughter that's on the way in December. That's why I'm here. That's the charge you all have. You have the responsibility of the future generations. Now, towards that end, I'm going to give you some observations. I'm not necessarily qualified, haven't read everything, but I will, but I'm not prepared yet. First of all, I'm concerned, when I first walked in here, I saw everybody up here reading these documents. You don't have to answer me, but I'd love to know when you got them. Because just looking at the documents that were held up in the exhibit, there has to be at least 100 pages of development material and diagrams. I've written all that. I've testified amicus curi on the part of developers. If you did get it this morning, I know you haven't read it. You couldn't have read it. So that is a glaring, glaring red flag. Regarding the traffic study, done traffic studies, again, testified amicus curi on the part of developers. Not one syllable, I take that back, a few syllables to the 146, 329 bypass intersection. What about the rest of 146? I can tell you for a fact, before it even happens, somehow, some way, that two-lane road, no shoulderless road, is going to have to be improved if for no other reason to allow simultaneous ingress and egress for your construction equipment. Think about this for just a second, ladies and gentlemen. You're going to do 25, almost three decades of development. You have any idea the amount of traffic you're going to create just from your construction? Do you know what they're going to drag onto the paved services from the construction site? Can you understand truly and empathize with the people that are going to be driving on those roads you're going to have to deal with? The mud, the stone, the hazards? I've done all this. I'm not that smart. I've just done it. 146 is going to need to go to four lanes with turns from at least the driving range out to the intersection with McDonald's. Mark my words. It was referenced earlier about 71 blowing up. There's your example of long-term construction and the residual impact. One wreck shut that highway down. I passed it. I took a detour to get here from Camden Manor. I'm not, again, I am not against this concept. I'm pretty darn familiar with these concepts. It's a hybrid of a Garden City concept that I'm very much in favor of, but you've got to do it right. These folks have in fact done a tremendous amount of due diligence, and from their perspective, they've done it right. No, they haven't. Because I'm not hearing, you know, we're going to put our plan together, then we're going to put a plan of implementation together, specifically already addresses, we're going to start pushing dirt on these 500 acres. How are we going to get to it? While we're getting to it, how are our other people going to get around it? Not one syllable about that. Not one syllable about 146. And I'm just talking from the McDonald's interchange back to Camden Manor. I'm not talking the other way. You all live here, you all know the nightmares we face. I chose to live here 24 years ago. I love it here. I'm going to try looking at putting my house in a trust, make my children the beneficiary of that trust. If I didn't give a damn, I would not be standing here, I promise you. While these infrastructure changes are going to have to be built, somehow, some way, who's going to write that check? I'm assuming the people that are sitting in this room that are deed holders in Oldham County are going to be writing that check. I don't want to write that check. I was on the development side, we had to build a school. We had to move a sewer line. I don't hear anybody saying that. I hear comments from within those 500 acres and no comments outside those 500 acres. Strongly recommend that you do your due diligence and make this topic of conversation include those contingencies. Regarding the medical complex, we saw wonderful drawings, beautiful drawings. I am a huge fan of Baptist Hospital, huge. Where's the president? Your people saved my life once already, and I'll be going back for a heart checkup this month. Totally for them. Tony Karam's my doctor, big Baptist proponent, trust him implicitly. I don't want a six or seven-story hospital in my backyard. I'm sorry. I just don't. But I'm one person and I'm nobody. I'm all for the greater good. I think Baptist Hospital does great work, but I want to remind you, if you haven't been there in a while, take a ride out to the Baptist Complex off of Dutchman's Lane. That's what you're looking at. Not make-believe, not drawings, that's what you're looking at. Is that the highest and best use of that parcel of ground? I don't know. I haven't done the feasibility studies, but I think you need to ask yourself that question. No mentions of schools. I heard a unit comment of 125, not really sure what that means in English, but here's what I can tell you. When we were going to take a town population of about 6,000 to 12,000, every resident that spoke at our hearings, what are we going to do about our schools? It was a $96 million project at that time. This project is probably multi-billion over the course of development. What are we going to do about the schools? I won't be here. My grandkids will probably be grown, but there are going to be kids that are going to need to go to school. And what's there is not even close to the anticipated impact that this development will have over the course of time. It's an incredible undertaking, lots, thousands and thousands of hours. But at some particular point in time, we're going to have to pay those bills. So I'm not saying withhold the zoning change amendment, but I'm also saying pay real close attention to kicking the proverbial can down the road, and don't do it. This is the time to set the stage with the terms and conditions that I am quite sure these developers, considering the partners that they've hired, are very familiar with. And if you're not smart enough to ask those questions, they're not going to volunteer it to you. So ask and hold them accountable. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we will move into rebuttal evidence cross-examination by the applicant. Mr. Barkley, Mr. Talbot.
John Talbot, I'm going to cover some of the points. First of all, we heard, well, before I talk, at our neighborhood meeting, we had probably, I didn't count them all, but I think we had probably in excess of 200 people at that meeting. It was probably two to three hours long. We had a lot of people here, and so it's good to see that at this hearing that we finally have reached, the opposition is not nearly as robust as it could have otherwise been. This is an enormous piece of property, enormous development, and enormous undertaking for Oldham County and Crestwood, and so it's almost surprising to me that we don't have more. The people that have spoken here today, their concerns are all legitimate. Traffic is an... Traffic is an issue, infrastructure is an issue, and those are things that all rightfully need to be addressed. What I do disagree with some of those folks about, though, is that them suggesting that they're not being addressed. If we came forward today with this project for all of the different portions of it and said, "We already know exactly what road improvements we need to do," or "What exactly infrastructure improvements we need to do," I guarantee you, these same folks would come up and say, "Well, how on earth do they know that? This is a 30-year development." And they would be right about that. What your plan and regulations provide for, as I mentioned before, is that, and this is even if there's not a change to the master plan, this is where we comply with our master plan, and we just come forward with our phasing, is that the commission staff may request an updated infrastructure impact analysis. That's for everything, infrastructure-wise. What we have said today is that we will, certainly for the Baptist part, that we will come forward with new traffic studies, because traffic is a problem. I mean, I live in Louisville, but I've been coming out to Oldham County for years, and every time I do, I think there's probably a 50-50 shot that I have trouble on the interstate. That's been a long, ongoing problem. Those are problems that don't have anything to do with this development. They're things that have been existence for a long, long time. And that's also why you have major improvements being done to that interstate system right now, to address those problems. And the traffic study that we, that our team prepared and with Diane Zimmerman, she goes through all of the current delays that you have at those intersections. Most of them were in great shape. Most of them were As and Bs, there were some Cs and Ds, and there were a couple Fs. The two primary Fs are down by the interstate that are being addressed with the current road improvements that are being done now. As Mr. Fogel, he put up, on the screen, he put up a slide with all of the road improvements that are being envisioned and being addressed right now for Crestwood, and there was a lot of them. Those things are in place. Will they be adequate? I don't know. I mean, traffic, with all the cases that I've been involved in, traffic is really relative. I'm yet to have a project where the neighbors come in and say, "You know, traffic is fine, it's really not a problem." The fact is, people's relatively, they're relatively speaking, concept of traffic in Nashville is different than it is in Louisville, and it's different than it is in Crestwood. It all varies. Everybody thinks that there's a traffic problem. You have traffic issues just about anywhere at peak times, at rush hour, that's understandable. You have traffic problems when you have school in session. Unfortunately, teaching kids is a necessary burden every community needs to have. But what's important is that when we come forward with our phasing, when we come forward with the phasing, for each part of our project, we will run a new traffic study. And if there are road improvements that need to be done, that are attributed to our development, we will have to address that. Now, one of the comments was, "Well, what about outside of your development?" There's statutory law, there is constitutional law, what you have to do. And it's prorated, basically. When you get outside of your development, sometimes you have to make some, you have to address that, sometimes you don't. Sometimes it's a community-wide problem that has to be addressed. But if it's attributed to our development, we have to address that part of the impact. And so those will be done. With sewers, I mean, the question was, "What about sewer lines?" I think the gentleman commented they had to put a sewer line in that was several miles long. If we've got to bring sewers, that's our problem. We'll have to do that. Those things will be addressed, but it's impossible to address it now. URO's regulation anticipates this long, multi-stepped process. Again, to reiterate, what will we have to do for each one? We will have to go to staff, we have to be in compliance with our master plan, we'll have to go to TRC for review with all of your engineers and your agencies. We will likely have to always get new impact analysis on the infrastructure. If we do anything that's significantly out of the bounds of what our master plan is, we then have to come back to you all, to this body here today. There is nothing that is going to be snuck through. This is going to be a transparent, well-thought-through process. The regulations are well-thought-through on all of the steps. And one thing I didn't mention, after we do all that, we then also have to go through the construction planning step as well. And so it is going to be multiple steps and layers, lots of analysis and lots of eyeballs on this plan as we come forward. We cannot anticipate every change and everything that's going to be needed 30 years into the future. That would be unreasonable, and frankly, it would probably be the worst thing to address the problems. The best way to do it is to address it for each phase as they come forward. There's also some comments about crime. I hear this often. I live in Rolling Fields, and we get cars broken into all the time. It's a long-established neighborhood. My sister's had her car broken in twice. My father's had his car stolen. That's unfortunately, with people that have nice homes or nice cars lying around, crime follows those things. It's not people that live in the area, it's not people coming and visiting hotels, it's people coming from the outside and finding areas that people are very relaxed, and that's what have happened. It is unfortunate, but we have our own police force where I live, and we still have that problem. I would love to say that's never an issue, but if we build really nice homes here...
Take your time, John.
Oh, I'll sit down. Thank you very much.
I don't know if you're...
Clay, do you want to?
I can't wait down a little bit, and I might just... Just one clarification on traffic, too, just to be clear. Diane Zimmerman has gone through and done an analysis of all the intersection and the amount of new traffic that will be resulted by this development. The goal of that analysis is to create the standard for today, if we built it today, and making sure that we understand what our impact is into the turn lanes needed, or extra lanes needed for this development. And hopefully, the idea is that we establish that today, that when we get into the future, that future developments out beyond that create bigger impact, it's not changing the impact that we're creating and what we're responsible for doing. I just wanted to clarify that. If we do increase in scivide density or whatever, and it is increasing our effects onto traffic, we will certainly address those, though.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I just have a brief follow-up. I think basically, I want to reiterate what John Talbot said so eloquently, which is that this is exactly the way you do development, and that is why this PND zoning was created. When you have a very large development, it's much better to come through in eight phases, and at each phase, address all the various issues that could come up. Whereas often with new subdivisions, you might build 500 units here, or 200 units here, and at the end of the day, you have no governance, and you cannot manage, you know, that, which is typically, you know, it leads to traffic, it can lead to sprawl. This is exactly what this developer wants to avoid. They care greatly about this community, and they really care about this property. It's a very important part of their family, and they will treat it with great respect. They will respect this body, they will follow the ordinance and regulations that have been passed, and I think that's as much as you can ask. And with that, if you all have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. So, Commissioners and everyone else, if you didn't notice, I skipped over your opportunity to ask questions. I need your help in reminding me from time to time, and if not occasionally, to stick with the plan. So, now it's time for the Commission to ask questions.
Of the opposition.
Of the opposition. Excuse me.
Well, we didn't even ask questions of the applicant.
We didn't get questions for anybody.
So can we have the same amount of time for the applicant and the opposition? Because we were supposed to get like...
So you're on commission time now. You're on commission time, and just like before, if you want to extend that amount of time, that's within your purview.
So are we asking questions to the applicant?
You're asking questions to whomever.
Okay. All right.
And you should be asking me some questions.
You have the cheat sheet.
Yeah, you do.
All right, Mr. Douglas, I assume you're up first?
I'll start. My first question will be to, I guess, the architect, DBZ? I don't know if it's Gant or the gentleman Barkley. Oh, they're not here? During the process of the development, when you reached out to DBZ, did they have any concerns, because they were developers, or I guess...
Their planners.
...of Norton Commons, correct?
Yes.
Was there any concerns they had after their development that they brought to you and said, "What we did in Norton Commons, we should do differently here"?
Nothing that I recall, no.
Okay.
But our intention is not to recreate Norton Commons, just to be clear about that.
I understand that, but some of the concept...
Yes, conceptually, yes, it's a traditional neighborhood development.
Correct. And I can't testify. So I'm going to ask you questions that, was there any questions or concerns on parking in some of the interior streets, especially in the mixed-use, commercial, some of the residential areas, where there, because you testified and presented that there was parking in the rear, in the alleys, or garages were in the rear. And if you're familiar with Norton Commons, they have that same concept, too, correct?
Right, that's correct.
But they have parking in the front?
They have street parking, that's correct.
And have you been there and seen Norton Commons, how they park on the street?
Sure.
And how, why the lanes are, the streets are? Have you had any concerns, or the fire department had any concerns about being able to get equipment down through those? Will the streets be wide enough to handle two lanes?
During the charrette process, we were involved with, I think Eddie Turner at the time? He was the chief...
Turner, Eddie Turner.
Eddie Turner.
Speak up a little bit.
Sorry. And we went through it, kind of just on a preliminary basis, kind of approaching them about concerns, about turning radius, about street conditions like yours. At the time, nothing was brought up. But now that we're getting to this other level of detail, it's going to be revisited during the TRC process, verify that these roads are working for the fire department. That's critical, absolutely.
Because I would imagine you've been in Norton Commons...
Sure.
...and seen the concept of their street, street parking.
Right.
Do you see the difficulty they have there?
I haven't, no. I mean, so you have a different type of street conditions, but I don't see the problem so much about access or that. We'd have to look at a case in point, right? There might be some tight conditions under certain circumstances or whatever. One thing about this development is that you have multiple access to lots with an alley condition. So you don't just have a frontage road, you also have a road behind the house that gives other access in emergency situations.
Are you, and this might be a question, you're engineer, but are they using curb and gutter, or a box curb?
For stormwater?
Yeah, for street parking.
Yeah, yes, we'll be using, yep.
MSD, there was discussions about sewers, liking their... I went to, I guess, the TRC had a look, and I guess there was no, really no comment. They said they would have to look at the development or proposals. Have you received any additional information from MSD?
I'm going to bring up Saipak Wilson over here to clarify, there has been some coordination.
Name and address for the record, please.
Jeremy Rogers, 608 South, 608 South Third Street, Louisville, Kentucky. So, on the comment as far as MSD is concerned, so we are currently working with them as far as preliminary capacities with this entire 500-acre development. So that is just, obviously, we will get more and more into detail with that as we phase this project out, but they are already starting conversations with us, as well as within MSD as far as just overall capacity with the system out here that they manage, that we will be adding to that.
Do you know if, was there any discussion about increasing or building out a new treatment facility for this development?
My understanding right now is, I mean, at this point, that's still in an analysis phase. Obviously, with the recent expansion of the Hyde Creek Treatment Facility, and the ability to get to that facility through existing infrastructure, that will be determined as the phasing continues and is looked at on this project.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'll just stop right now, and I'll let others ask questions.
Okay, who would like?
I think it'd be appropriate to have Ms. Zimmerman come up to answer some questions, please, since we've been talking about traffic as a major issue.
Get your name and address for the record, please.
Diane Zimmerman, 12803 High Meadows Pike Prospect 40059.
Thank you, Barry, you're on.
My first question would be, what was the scope of your study, and did it go outside of this, just the parameters of this development?
I'm going to answer the first, second one first. It did not go outside the parameters of the intersections impacted directly by this development. So it started at Judge Carden, and picked up I-71 ramps, 329 at the bypass, the Madison and Dove Field Trace, and then on 329, I'm blanking on the street name, Spring Hill Trace, and Chlor Lake, and then Chlor Hill Road at Kentucky 146.
Just to be clear, then, I just want to be sure, because this is some of the questions that were posed here. So, I know you already said this, but I just want to make it clear. So there was no, from your standpoint, there was no study, if you want to call it that, for Crestwood, or 146, or anything outside of this?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Hampton, anything else?
No, you said you were going to ask, that was the second part.
Well, you said what was, the first one, what was the scope, and that listed the intersections that were analyzed?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Urban.
Well, I just want to jump in. You know, we did do a study on Kentucky 22, from, really not quite Murphy Lane, but from the Oldham County line to the old 329 bypass. So, and that's outside of the scope of what they needed to do, but that was completed last year. So there are improvements along Kentucky 22. We have, and Brian listed all the other agencies that are doing all the other road projects, like Kipta, the Transportation Cabinet, City of Crestwood, and Oldham County Fiscal Court. One thing that we forgot to add in there was, we're going to extend Kenwood Road to 146, and that's currently under contract with a design engineer. So, that list was fairly comprehensive about all the studies that are being done. Mr. Hartman's issue, we are looking at all the other impacts of the roads. And also, Kentucky 146 has been on the Transportation Cabinet's Long Range Metropolitan Transportation Plan to look at improvements from Crestwood all the way, really to LaGrange, but principally we're looking first at Crestwood to Buckner. So, outside the scope of the requirements of their traffic analysis, is a lot of other studies and projects going on in the Crestwood area.
And I understand that. I was really trying to clarify to some of the folks that had questions about this.
Good question.
Thank you.
Mr. Hampton, anything additional? Mr. Finney.
I have a question for Mr. Jones. On Area 1C is located on your map here. It's shown next to Camden Manor, and the density in Camden Manor is quite different than the density given in Area 1C.
Sure.
What is the density of housing in Camden Manor? Do you know?
Density of, it's R2A.
You know, I mean...
I think, if I recall correctly, I'm pretty certain it's R2A, which, let me just bring up this slide, sorry. R2A is a density of 5.81 units per acre.
And what is the density in your development there?
I don't necessarily quote me, I think it were around 20 residential homes on around three or four acres.
Say again?
This is the density, are you talking about this one parcel?
Yes, 1C.
So, yes, it is basically cottage court concept. If I recall, it's somewhere around 20, maybe 24 residential units at that location on around three to four acres. So, if you're doing the math, it's close to R2A type of development in density.
Are these apartments? Are these, are these apartments or are they?
The idea is it's single-family homes, it's cottage courts, it's just kind of the typology I mentioned. I could show you an image of it, if it helps to clarify. This, this is basically a cottage court concept. So they are smaller homes, they're more affordable, the homes don't have garages, there's street parking, and there's designated street parking areas for the homes. And that's, that's the concept of that location.
The density in, in there appears to be quite heavier than what it is in Camden Manor.
Correct. The density, yes. I think overall, though, it's three or four acres. And with 20 to 24 units on that, there's a lot of open space associated with the homes, too. Yeah, those are lots on, on that property, you can see. Wish I could zoom, try to zoom in.
In other words, the lines showing there are lots and not buildings?
That's correct, yes, yes. Just like all of these, all these yellow, that, those are lots, individual lots. Only case in point where there are buildings is when you get into, idea of a building footprint is in the commercial areas with the darker, the reddish-brown, the browns and the development, hospital development.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Mr. Finney?
No, that'll be all, thank you.
Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I need, if she would, Ms. Zimmerman, also the president of, or from Baptist Hospital, Mr. Talbot, all three of you. Maybe all at once, because it's all going to pertain.
I was hoping we were going to avoid all questions.
It's all going to pertain to the same thing. From Baptist's standpoint first, Baptist Health. You mentioned that, I believe in your testimony, relocating to LaGrange Hospital, correct?
Yes, sir.
And how many beds are in LaGrange Hospital now?
So we are licensed for 90 beds.
And how many beds will be at the Crestwood?
So we would move that license, that 90-bed license to Crestwood.
So in quality terms, it's not increasing the hospital size, correct?
So I, I think there's maybe two answers here to this question. So we have to move the license in total per regulations here in the state of Kentucky. So we would move those 90 beds. Through the process of being able to add beds, when the capacity is necessary to do so, we would go back at that time to be able to do that. We do see that the projections could be with the growth that we may see, that we may need more than that. But as of right now, we'd be moving the 90, 90-bed license.
And of the patients in LaGrange Hospital, can you determine where they come from?
Our patients in the LaGrange Hospital come from a service area primarily made up of Oldham, Henry, Tremble Counties, some Carroll and some Shelby, and Eastern Jefferson a little bit.
So Baptist Health thought it was feasible to move it eight miles south?
Yeah, certainly, and it's a good question, too. So ultimately, right now, we have a number of patients in our community that are seeking services outside of the community. Because again, we're looking to build the next-generation hospital, it would have additional services and availability. So ultimately, we, we think that moving it down the, down the highway a little bit will be able to bring in more services to the community and more patients would be able to stay here.
So with that testimony, Ms. Zimmerman, why wouldn't your study include outside of this parameter if he's pulling patients from Henry, Tremble, Carroll County to Oldham, to Crestwood?
I did include I set the interchange at I-71. So wherever they've come from, they have to get off the interstate to access the facility.
If a patient is being transported from Ballersville or from Smithville?
During peak hours, I mean, right, we're only looking at a few hours, so we're talking about one vehicle changing its path, right?
I'm asking you which direction, so you came, you used the study just for 71?
Yes.
Correct. If they don't come down 71, which way would they come?
Well, they're either coming 329, coming from my side of the county, or they're coming 329 through Crestwood.
From 146 or 22?
Well, sure, but I mean, again, we're not talking significant numbers. And I, I think that Mr. Urban's answer is, that is a, a bigger scoped question than can be addressed at a traffic impact study level. It's more a travel demand, it needs to use a model to, to account for what are these changes in traffic patterns to all of Oldham County? And not the specifics of how does the intersection of 329 and Dove Field need to be designed to accommodate this traffic?
Mr. Talbot.
Yes, sir.
Your understanding when it comes back to the TRC, does it include traffic study?
Yeah, for our phasing, it would include a traffic study and, and staff, Jim Urban or whoever would be in his position 20, 30 years from now would have the opportunity, under the current regulations, to demand it, even if we tried not to do it. And I would anticipate for the size of all of these, you're going to have traffic studies, even if we try to get out of it, it would be imposed upon us. But at this hearing, we've made it clear, we would do a traffic study for each one. Now, when we do that, I would think Jim Solomon would be setting the scope that would be appropriate for that traffic study, or maybe it would be your counterpart for Crestwood, I'm not sure. But there would be somebody other than us that would be choosing the scope for that study.
At each phase?
That's correct.
That's what I want to put on record. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Clint, before you sit down, is it Baptist Hospital's intention to not use the LaGrange Hospital at all? Or is it repurposed?
Yeah, the intention is to continue use of our LaGrange facility and location, just would not be an inpatient hospital. We'd want to continue outpatient services, convenient, close to home.
So is it reasonable?
In the, in the county.
Yeah, so is it reasonable to think that some of the same trips that would go to LaGrange are going to continue going to LaGrange and not just be transferred to Crestwood?
Yes, well, I think it depends on, on the service. If it's an inpatient hospital need, that will need to come to, to Crestwood in the future. But from emergency care, we foresee right now continuing to have the emergency department open. If a hospitalization is needed based on that emergency department visit, that will need to come on down to Crestwood then at that time.
I'm glad you put that on record about the emergency department, because I think a lot of people were misunderstood that you were just relocating the whole.
Oh, well, thank you for the clarifying question, that is not the intent. We are relocating the hospital services, keeping an outpatient services center in LaGrange. Again, for that convenience, as I mentioned in my, my earlier comments, really looking for convenience for our patients.
And that's why, your, your question didn't ask it, that's why I did, because the trips generated might be, it's just gener, the, the traffic analysis looks at trips generated by a hospital of the size they're proposing. It doesn't say they're being transferred from other hospitals, it doesn't say they're coming as new patients or old patients. It just says, these trips are being generated by this use.
I understand that, I understand what Mrs. Zimmerman was saying, one ambulance is not going to create blah blah. I want it on record from the three of them, because there are so much concerns about traffic, that each phase of this development, correct? Mr. Talbot saying that has to come back to the TRC, which is a part of this full review, and part of that could be for the traffic study, correct?
That's, that's correct. Now, now I'm just speaking for the Baptist side, but I think that's true for all of it, but I'm just representing Baptist, so to be clear.
All right.
Anything else, Mr. Douglas? Ms. Nassar.
Okay, process procedure question. One of the things that got brought up was fire capabilities. So during the technical review, and that might be a good question for you, Dan. During the technical review, initial phase, it doesn't appear we had any comments from fire. As each phase is brought, will that be, go back to the fire in TRC to be addressed? One of the questions, has it been had with fire of buildings? The one, roads and the fire capabilities, and then two, the height of buildings and fire capability.
So, yes, it will go back to TRC for discussion with the fire department, verify that everything works for their safety needs and emergency needs. Height, building height, I can't recall correctly. I think there probably is somebody in the room that could probably answer this question, but I'm, I think they are increasing their capabilities of reaching buildings at greater heights by a new ladder truck, if I'm not mistaken, in South Oldham. But that will be addressed too through TRC.
And then another question for you, when it comes to the residential developments, will there be a builders' guild or approved group of builders?
Yes, there will be a builders' guild, possibly an architects' guild, but we'll determine that, but there will be a builders' guild, yes.
Ms. Nassar, anything additional? Mr. Finney.
I have a question for Mr. Jones again. The apartments, I believe it's called Crestwood Commons.
Yes.
How many units are in there?
232.
That's 230, 232 apartment units.
That's, yes.
And they're only, way in and out will be through this medical complex, is that correct?
The way out, yes, down Judge Carden Boulevard, which is the, was designed to satisfy the needs of the apartment complex.
So that, in other words, they have to drive through the medical complex, they will have to drive through the medical complex in order to come in and out to get?
That is correct, through kind of the main access road that's kind of going back to them, that's existing there today.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Fox.
This might be for Mr. Jones as well, this is a 30-year project, people are going to be parking on the street in places. Are you going to provide electrical charging stations for all of the cars that you're going to be parking there every night?
Well, that's to be determined. Our restrictions, we, we really had a great individual to help write the restrictions for us. His name is Dan Sloan, and he, he's written restrictions for these communities throughout the United States. And he has a really interesting perspective as anticipating the future needs. One was, was addressing air rights, and this is kind of going off your question a little bit, addressing air rights about delivery and whatever that, through the restrictions, because drones might be the, a critical element in our future needs. Another is addressing, at what point vehicle use may change to more of a subscription use? Where people, I'm getting a little off track, but just anticipating what happens in the future. One of those is charging stations. I don't know if it'll be determined where, but you know, that will be a need to be addressed in the future, of course.
So at the moment, you have no plans?
No plans, no, no, but we're, we're all ears looking into the future of what, what development's going to require.
Thank you.
Anything additional, Mr. Fox? Ms. Davis, did you have a question? Okay, Mr. Ender.
Yeah, so this question is for Mr. Jones. I noticed here on the, the Harrods Creek recreational area, it doesn't have a phase to it. Kind of, can you talk me through kind of what your strategy is there? And then one follow-up question would be, as you kind of worked from one phase to the other, will you be completing the green spaces, civic areas? And kind of other public comment areas before moving on to the next phases?
We haven't determined that yet, so ideally speaking, I would like to get public access onto the property in a rudimentary way, for people to access and hike it if it's possible. So when you start to look at a first phase, you know, developing some, you know, rough trail systems for people to partake in, maybe not as developed as Creasy or Van or anything like that, but it would be ideal scenario for that to start taking place up front. People to access, we do plan on developing and putting houses in the fields and whatnot, but that's kind of be determined. And of course, you know, the, the, the natural open space, the trail systems will be developed. It's hard to say, but it will be developed with, you know, trail systems and bridges and open space amenities and different things like that.
Anything additional, Mr. Ender?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Marsh?
I believe this is for Mr. Jones as well. In the phase plan, 1B, which I believe is the medical complex, you have 1 to 25 years? Why is that so extended? What is the phase plan within that phase?
I don't know if I should answer this, or if somebody from Baptist, you know, what's that, you want me to answer it? Okay, I'll answer it. Well, I mean, so they are obviously going to build up front, so the hospital's going to be built and done up front. It's my understanding that they're going to try to, to design and build the road network on day one, and then building the hospital. Make sure I don't step out of line, building the hospital immediately as well. Now, the question is, what happens with their other medical office buildings? Well, they, maybe there's demand to go ahead and start building those as well, but they're basically, they're as needed bases going into the future. I think their, their, their concern is about growth and having the space for growth.
Okay, so taking that, answer that concept further, the other phases are 1 to 5, 1 to 2, 2 to 6. To Mr. Ender's question, are you going to complete those before you move on? Is, is that a deadline? Are all these on 2 to 25 and 5 to 25?
The phase plan, I'm just going to scroll to it, so I'm making sure. The phase plan, we know where we're starting, and we know the direction we're moving into. To say that, you know, Phase 3A and that hard line edge right there is part of 3A and we're dead on that? No, we have no idea, it's about engineering when we get into getting into the detail and everything. It's more of a direction, Phase 1 here and proceeds to the back. It could happen in a different ways, but this is really trying, trying to establish an idea of what we think and anticipate the phases will be.
Okay, so these are guidelines, but you could start phases multiple at different times and have them in the works and not complete throughout the entire process.
Oh, so you're saying we jump to the back and did a phase back there?
Correct, that's what I heard you say.
No, I don't think it's our idea to bounce around and develop. I'm understanding your question correctly, yeah. It's not, it's not ideal, there are certain situations, you might see 1C over in the, the small parcel up front. It's not that we may not do that in the first phase, but we have a possibility that we could, because utilities and everything's there to do that today. And it, it's sitting off where we could do that, just put that as a placeholder, we may not do that. But really, our trajectory is to start, hospital will start up front, start at this location and work our way back. Across the street, they will have to kind of bill, will have to explain what their phasing looks like. But ideally, they're looking at starting their phasing, residential phasing in the back portion.
Can I, can I jump in there with a question? Is it, these could really be considered sections, not just phases? So you could have multiple sections going on at the same time?
Sure, sure, well, so multiple sections and saying, you know, that our Phase 1 is over here, starting, they're, they're starting their Phase 1. Kind of the structure of the way these, these properties are owned, on the south side of the bypass is owned by Lee's side, on the north side is owned by Carla's side. So we are both developing it together as a team, but they may approach and start, you know, doing one of their phases differently than we are doing it in timeframe.
Okay, thank you. One other question, the boutique hotel near the Jug Handle?
Yeah.
I, I don't see parking for that, are we considering structure parking anywhere within there?
That will have to be developed, but all parking will be satisfied.
Okay, so the, the design here is rudimentary, there's really not any?
That's right, it's, it's the concept and location, and it, it needs to be vetted out through, through engineering and all that would have to be taken care of as far as details of parking.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Marsh?
No, sir.
All right, Ms. Davis, I'm going to ask you to hang on to this, okay? We are at noon, a little past, and we need to get this commission a break and fed. I'm going to ask you to come back in one hour. While we're gone, commissioners, do not engage in discussion with anyone present. Anyone present, do not engage my commissioners in discussion about this hearing, all right? I don't want to see any of you get into sidebars, ex parte communications, that would void any kind of decisioning. Be careful with what you're doing while we're away, and we'll be back in one hour.